Apologize, apologize for three minutes. Uh, we're gonna do a little, uh, we're gonna go through, uh, whoops. Uh, the announcements A, B, and C, then we're gonna move to up here. Uh, we're gonna go to nine A and nine B. Uh, again, appreciate y'all being here. We're, we're packed again, we don't wanna go upstairs, let's lose the, uh, voice of everybody. So, uh, we'll go ahead and, uh, we'll call this meeting to order. And, uh, welcome, glad you're here. And at this time, I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Rowland for the, uh, A, B, and C situation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Before we head into the announcements, uh, Jack Morgan, or you, uh, tell Jack, Jack had a real quick update he wanted to give the board on the, uh, well at Wesley's Park. We were able to, to get that drilled this week. Jack, if you'll come on up.
Last month, y'all authorized me, and I requested, uh, money to drill a well at Wesley's Park for the water feature down there. Uh, I got prices from all three of the well drillers, they were twenty, eighteen dollars a foot, and the cheapest was sixteen dollars a foot was Crane's. So, we went with Crane's. They put a caveat on their quote, says, "We will drill to a depth of three hundred feet at sixteen per foot. If no water, we will continue to drill to, to a depth of four hundred to four hundred and forty feet, no additional cost." Well, we had some water then, uh, it'd been difficult to make it work. Those gentlemen went to eight hundred and fifty-five feet at their own expense. We paid for three hundred foot, and that's it. So, I think that's phenomenal in this day and age. They said, uh, they didn't do it for me, didn't do it for you, did it for the children of Macon County.
Awesome. Good. What was the name of the organization?
Crane Brothers Weldriller.
Crane Brothers.
I would like to ask, uh, this may not be the time, but, uh, I think the county should put a beach down there, maybe, with their name on it somewhere on the greenway. So, I'll be asking for that. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Jack.
Thank you, Jack. Yes, moving right along, uh, this meeting will be continued to May twenty-first, six o'clock PM for the, uh, presentation of the fiscal year, uh, twenty-five budget. Uh, that will be the county manager's recommended budget. Also, at that meeting, I think, uh, spoke, speaking with our architect a little earlier today, and I think we'll have, uh, some updates from the CM at Risk for the Franklin High School project at that meeting as well, and possibly, um, we might hear from our, our financial advisors. So, we're, we'll leave that open, we'll be continuing this meeting so we won't have to advertise, we can kind of, uh, just keep flowing with the agenda as, as the, that date comes. After May twenty-first, a budget work session has been scheduled by the Board of Education for May twenty-eighth, six o'clock PM in the Fine Arts Center at Franklin High School. And tonight, um, we're proud to have, uh, Mr. Russ Harris from the Southwestern Commission here with us, and, uh, this is our annual opioid meeting. I saw some representatives from, uh, the town of Franklin, the town of Franklin, and town of Highlands, uh, were invited to this meeting, and there's Amy, how are you tonight? Glad you joined us, and, and so, we'll be hearing an update from Russ, and the purpose of the annual meeting is just to, um, get the updates on, on what's going on with respect to the opioid funding, and, uh, Russ, we'll wait till, uh, we got a, 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 a gen item for you. Yeah, we got a special gen item out. I was just gonna go ahead and announce that this is the, uh, our annual opioid meeting as required, uh, by the opioid funding guidelines, where we have invited each of the municipalities here tonight. We have Russ Harris, who's leading the regional initiative with the Southwestern Commission, so we'll hear from him, as well as, um, have some dialogue with, with the municipalities as they wish. So, with that being said, Mr. Shields, uh, I will turn it back over to you, I think we were gonna go ahead and move into, uh, item nine A, just to clear the room out a little bit, under reports and presentations, um, so.
Awesome, I need to excuse myself and step into my role as a chaplain, gentlemen.
All right. Don't stay gone long.
My name is Bonnie Peggs, I'm one of the chaplains for, um, Macon County. For the last three and a half years, Davis Hooper, Danny and I have been the three chaplains. As we started, we were chaplains for Franklin Police Department, Franklin Fire Department, and then we, uh, were asked to be chaplains for the Sheriff's Department, for EMS, for nine-one-one, for our state troopers, and we're called by several other fire departments when they have a critical incident, and we respond to anybody who needs us. We want to introduce, we've brought on four new chaplains because we're getting called more and more often, and so Davis is gonna introduce to you our new chaplains.
We're happy to have some help. During this spring, we, or winter, we had some rough times and stretched us pretty thin, but we are thankful for those who are here with us, and, uh, one of our new chaplains could not be here tonight, Wick Westman, he's with the, uh, Habitat for Humanity, and they had a board meeting tonight and couldn't be here, but Dylan Castle is one of our, David Hastings, you know him, and Tramor Treville, and we are, are Trevor Trammell, I'll get that right up the tongue with her, and, uh, we're glad to have them with us.
One of the things that we decided to do, as we realized that our first responders go above and beyond almost every day, we wanted to recognize the first responders who go above and beyond the normal, above and beyond, so we started giving out quarterly awards. We give them a sixty-dollar gift certificate to Haywood Smokehouse, and they get a plaque in recognition. So, now our new chaplains, and Danny and Davis are gonna recognize them at this point.
All right, to start off with, we'll start with nine-one-one dispatch, Alicia Pollock.
Is Alicia here?
Is Alicia here?
Nope.
My job is easy. Okay. Uh, our sheriff's office answers a lot of the calls, and we'd like to recognize Jonathan Phillips with the sheriff's department.
He's not here, Mr. Hooper, his mother-in-law flew in from Poland, so he spends some time with.
So, we're gonna give this to the sheriff. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. And then Matt Reynolds, Matthew Reynolds, we call him Matt, he works with EMS, and, uh, he cannot be here tonight, we'll get this to him.
I think I got the lucky draw. Um, it's my privilege to present this award to Mr. Nick Long, Potters.
I've got the nine-one-one dispatcher, Taryn Wood, is she here? Taryn Wood. Taryn won one of the nine-one-one dispatches this week. Get that to her.
Thank you, sir.
For me and us, we'd like to recognize Dana Stewart.
If you take, yes, we'll be outside, we wanna take some pictures.
So, it's definitely an honor to get to do this. It's not an easy job, but it's a very rewarding one, get to see, get to be out there with these guys, and we finally get to be on call with them. Like I said, this winter, month, uh, I'd say January was a pretty heavy month with these guys, so getting to be there with them has been amazing. Um, we like to do, we serve them also by doing some pancake breakfasts, so every holiday, because these guys are always working while we're off, so every holiday, about three years ago, Ms. Bonnie came up with the idea of every time we go there at seven-thirty in the morning, and we'll cook breakfast for them, we invite everybody, all the first responders come in, have a good time of fellowship with them, so that's been pretty beneficial. So, we'd just like to say thank you to all of them for their service, we appreciate you guys for what you do.
Thank you very much for allowing us to recognize our first responders, it's an honor to be able to serve them, and now that we have some additional, uh, chaplains, we're excited to offer that to all of our fire departments throughout the county, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
I got it, I got it. Let's see, where's my FBLA lady?
Right here she is.
No, let's see, let's go with FBLA, let's go, hold on a second, hold on a second. Are you, uh?
I'll start these guys out, yes.
But are you with FBLA?
Yes, I'm presenting them, yeah.
All right, all right.
Thank you this evening for letting me, um, have the privilege of come present some pretty incredible, um, young men and women who have helped us immensely at the senior center. About four years ago, we started having this thing called COVID, you know, everything had to then go virtual, a lot of our older adults struggled with, "How do I use this technology? How do I use my laptop? How do I use this phone?" And we got creative and thought of some ways, and one of the ways was engaging some of our high school students. Who better to play on a cellphone than a high school student? So, we reached out to Ms. Brooks with the, um, Future Business Leaders of America over at the high school, and tossed this idea around for a while, and we're like, "We can make this work." So, we now, at least, um, twice a month, have a group of students from the high school come over, and they mentor our older adults on how to use their technology. Um, these kids recently took this program and went to the state FBLA competition, and guess what? They won first place at the state. They, they, they now get to go at the end of June and present this at their national competition, so we gotta wish them some good luck in that. Um, I'm gonna let the kids kinda go through theirs field, and Ms. Brooks, and then at the end, Kim's gonna kinda tell you how some of our older adults have responded to this program, so thank you for letting these kids have a minute to shine, so they're awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm gonna ask my group to come on up. All right. So, Ann Rose, Kaylee. So.
Ms. Brooks?
Yes.
I ain't gonna do that picture, how do you, uh, Ms. Hollerfield, shoot.
Maybe, if y'all could stand up, maybe, yeah, when we get done, is that okay?
You do like that, move, stand up.
Yes, yes, perfect.
They won't be able to see me behind this one.
I know, this is my baby, Josh.
We're gonna get on the table, we're gonna lay on the table.
I don't know what happened there. I don't know. Anyway, so, what we do is, uh, every other Wednesday, we, uh, go over to the senior center, and they have, um, they have sign-ups, uh, for the adults that want, need help, and so my kids, a lot of them, every time, are like, "I wanna go, I wanna go," and, and, you know, sometimes it doesn't work out with, like, uh, practices or whatever else, and they don't get you, or maybe they work and they can't go, but I have a lot of the same ones that like to go every single time, and I think that's so sweet, but, anyway, and like I told my mother-in-law, um, I'm an Apple person, and so she needed a new phone, and I said, "Well, if you want my tech support, you better get you an Apple, because I can't do droids," so, uh, and thank God we have some that can, because, uh, I cannot. So, we're hoping to do something with it through the summer, um, I know they've got crazy schedules, they go on vacation, I go on vacation, and so we're gonna try to work something out at least once a month, you know, for June and July, because they're gonna need us before August, but, like you said, we've done this since, um, twenty-twenty, and so this year, we have to pick a, a community service project we're gonna focus on for our competition that year, even though we've done this since twenty-twenty, um, so, and we've actually competed in this one other time, and you can actually do it up to three times, so, um, I'm gonna let them, um, we got Kaylee, we got Ann Rose, and we got, uh, Owen are gonna start their presentation, and they're not gonna do the whole thing, because y'all, I mean, y'all might wanna hear it, but we don't wanna take up any more time than we have to, and so, and then I'm gonna let, um, the others introduce themselves and tell what grade they're in, if that's okay, and then I'll introduce, um, Nadia, so.
We ready? All right.
You get on your knees, you get high.
All right. Have you ever been faced with technological dilemma? My grandparents have on several occasions, and I knew there had to be a better way than just my tech support. Hi, I'm Owen Brooks.
I'm Kaylee Rotten.
And I'm Ann Rose Warman, and we will be presenting our community service project in Orlando, Florida at FBLA National Convention.
I'm Seth Allen, I'm in ninth grade.
Mark Van Hook, I'm in tenth grade.
Jonah Brandt, I'm in tenth grade.
I'm Nadia Owl, and I'm in eleventh grade.
I wanna say really about Nadia, she's gonna be our Western Region Vice President this year, or this coming year, and so she'll, uh, represent Western North Carolina.
I'm Joanna Vasquez, and I'm in ninth grade.
I'm Anthony Sanchez, and I'm in eleventh grade.
I'm Dorothy Perez, and I'm in eleventh grade.
I'm Anna Damian, and I'm in ninth grade.
The future looks good, the future looks good.
Yeah, there, I appreciate it. I know, and I, I look around, I was looking around this room, and I'm, I'm like you, Mr. Shields, now I see all of my kids in here, Josh being one of them, so, anyway, and then Nick was one also, so, I appreciate this opportunity for us.
Who's taking the picture? Ms. Hollerfield, I can do it, or who's taking the?
I think she was gonna say something else.
I like these shirts.
I'm just wrapping it up, because I am one of those older adults. I'm also the senior center coordinator for the Dorothy and John Crawford Senior Center, and this program has been amazing. Some of the comments that we have had is, "I wanna come back every time, because they're just like my grandkids," and we've had, "I could never have used this phone that my kids gave me for Christmas if it hadn't have been for them." We had one lady get a phone from one of her children, and it was, she was supposed to hook it up to her car, had no idea, one of these guys went out to her car, hooked it up for her, so that now she could drive hands-free while talking, so, they've answered the questions, and if they didn't know the answers, they were, they would say, "We don't know, we'll find out." It's just been a great program, so. As an older adult, and if anybody in here is over the age of fifty, you are welcome to try this program out.
I need help right now.
I know.
I'm gonna take a shot.
I gotta take a real one.
One of Yuki's Go Show, we're out of here.
Thank you, thank you so much. Y'all, go on, y'all, y'all with us?
Yeah.
I don't remember, to be honest. I can't remember.
All do the last time, forty-two minutes.
Let's see, we're gonna start over again, get the glasses adjusted, uh, at this time, I don't know who said the moment of silence last time, Paul did, was it Paul's time?
Paul's time.
All right, um, three, four, and five, uh, three and four, Mr. Higdon. Three and four, here's the pledgeman and prayerman. The pledgeman and the prayerman. They pledge the flag, pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic of which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. No public hearing, public comment, uh, is there a sheet? You got it. Who's got the clock? Is that, um?
I, he has it, they want it automatically.
All right, the, uh, we'll go into the, uh, public comment time at this time, you, uh, the total time for public comment is forty-five minutes, uh, but each individual has up to five minutes for your comments, or less, and let's see, Elke, where are you?
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm actually here representing Gracie, but she's home, uh, preparing for EOGs, so, um, I wanna thank everybody for their support that they gave us at the Youth Mental Health Rally we had on April twenty-eighth. I think it was a really great turnout, and we've had a lot of support. Our keynote speaker was, uh, North Carolina Department of Human Services, Cody Kinsley, and, um, he, uh, he also did an interview with Gracie, and is actually doing a little video clip for the month of May to, uh, talk about youth mental health and the need that we have. Um, he also mentioned that a, a lot of the, the things that they're working on is, uh, to talk about, uh, how to help children in grades below, you, below middle and high schools, so, elementary school children. Um, Gracie was invited to be the keynote speaker on April thirtieth in Raleigh for the inaugural Child, or the State, State at the Child Summit that was put on by North Carolina Child, and it included statewide organizations and people from, uh, all over, Google, uh, representatives, uh, the, the secretary was there, senators were there, everybody had the same basic message, they all understand that the children, we need to provide help for the children, and, as Gracie was the keynote speaker, which was an honor to be invited for that, um, one of the things, the common thread that I heard from all the presentations that each individual did was, um, the, uh, the need for prevention. I know we have to take care of intervention for people that need the help now, but in order to prevent that to grow, we have to take care of the children, uh, and really put some things in place for prevention, so, I do hope, and Gracie would like to be a part of the solution, and try to figure out what we can do here in Macon County, and then maybe Macon County can become, can become the picture for the rest of the state to, uh, implement some things. Um, just one more thing, um, a special thanks to Mr. Shields and to Danny Anton, um, also to Sheriff Holbrook, and, uh, the Macon County School Board, as well as Josh Young, okay? You guys have been amazing in supporting Gracie, several, some of you were actually at the, at the event, and I appreciate you bringing your, your group, I think that was a big success, and it really showed what actually can be done as a coping skill. So, um, anyway, thank you for having me tonight, and, uh, I look forward to working with you all.
Thank you, Elke. Mr. Love, Jason, there you are.
Good evening. Uh, my name is Jason Love in Otto, North Carolina. I'm here on behalf of Main Spring Conservation Trust, where I've served on the board since twenty-ten. I'm the immediate past chair of the board, and currently serve as the chair of the Aquatic Committee, where we focus on water quality of the Little Tennessee River. Main Spring's mission is to conserve the waters, forests, farms, and heritage of the Upper Little Tennessee and high water river valleys. We do this work through a combination of working with landowners to conserve their land, and by educating the public. We're traditionally not an advocacy organization, rarely weighed into state or county issues. However, the issue of weakening the existing floodplain ordinance is too important an issue for us to set on the sidelines, as it impacts our core mission. I'm here on behalf of Main Spring to urge you to keep the existing county floodplain ordinance. At the very least, I urge you to allow the planning board to do its due diligence, and better understand the consequences of allowing fill and associated development into the floodplain, so that this information can be relayed to you, our commissioners, so that you can make an informed decision regarding any changes to the ordinance. It is important to remember that the existing floodplain ordinance was strengthened in response to the deadly impacts of Hurricane Francis and Ivan in Macon County in September two thousand and four. Some of y'all probably remember that, um, about twenty years ago. These back-to-back hurricanes led to widespread, wide-
Mr. Love, Jason, there you are.
Good evening. My name is Jason Love in Otto, North Carolina. I'm here on behalf of Main Spring Conservation Trust, where I've served on the board since 2010. I'm the immediate past Chair of the Board, and currently serve as the Chair of the Aquatic Committee where we focus on water quality of the Little Tennessee River. Main Spring's mission is to conserve the waters, forests, farms, and heritage of the Upper Little Tennessee and High Washington River Valleys. We do this work through a combination of working with landowners to conserve their land and by educating the public. We're traditionally not an advocacy organization, rarely weighed into state or county issues. However, the issue of weakening the existing floodplain ordinance is too important an issue for us to set on the sidelines as it impacts our core mission. I'm here on behalf of Main Spring to urge you to keep the existing county floodplain ordinance. At the very least, I urge you to allow the Planning Board to do its due diligence and better understand the consequences of allowing fill and associated development into the floodplain so that this information can be relayed to you, our Commissioners, so that you can make an informed decision regarding any changes to the ordinance. It is important to remember that the existing floodplain ordinance was strengthened in response to the deadly impacts of Hurricane Francis and Ivan in Macon County in September 2004. Some of y'all probably remember that, about 20 years ago. These back-to-back hurricanes led to widespread flooding and the catastrophic debris flow on Pete's Creek, which claimed the life of five people and destroyed 15 homes. The existing ordinance was crafted based on the input of technically qualified experts and following public hearings, in which there was near unanimous support of the ordinance, from farmers to private property rights advocates, from Democrats to Republicans. The ordinance was crafted to improve safety for life and property during major flood events. It is not a matter of another flood event of this magnitude strikes Macon County, just a matter of when. One only has to look to nearby Haywood County when Tropical Storm Fred dropped 14 inches of rain on the headwaters of the Pitten River in August 2021, so just a few years ago, which led to massive flooding, 450 structures destroyed or damaged, $300 million in property damage, and six lives lost. The existing ordinance was crafted to try and minimize the impacts from these types of events, and for the reasons outlined above, I urge you to keep it intact. Thank you.
Thank you, Jason. Ms. Penland, Kelly, there you are.
Good evening, I'm Kelly Penland. I am a local real estate agent here in Macon County, and I decided to come here tonight on behalf of my clients, both past clients, future clients, to urge you to use caution and care and consideration when making any changes to this floodplain ordinance. I have a gentleman in particular right now, he is a veteran, he is utilizing a VA, low-income, low-down payment loan. We have finally found him an affordable home. Here's the house, and here's the current floodplain. Right now, no flood insurance is required, the VA has approved his purchase. I don't know how to advise him. If something is changed, that in the future, somebody upstream from him is going to negatively impact his property, what is his recourse going to be? So, that's kind of where I'm coming from as a real estate agent, concerned about my clients, and I just want to urge you to use caution in any changes. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Lewis. Yeah, let me ask you one thing, how's your dad doing?
He's doing real well, thank you.
Health-wise, everything going good? Tell him we asked about it.
I certainly will, thank you. I'm here to talk about the Planning Board. I stand before you, let me get my glasses. I stand before you today to earnestly advocate for the establishment of a dedicated subcommittee tasked with a thorough examination and potential revisions of our floodplain ordinance. The recent meeting we attended was a poignant reminder of the significance of this issue, with the room brimming with impassioned discussion and concern from community members. In light of the gravity of the situation, I wish to underscore the invaluable resources that our esteemed Planning Board represents. There's some really good people on that board, very strong board. Their expertise, dedication, and willingness to commit to their time to this endeavor should not be underestimated. In proposing the formation of a subcommittee, they offer us a unique opportunity to tap into their collective wisdom and experience to address the complexities and challenges inherent in our current floodplain ordinance. It is evident from the discussion that transpired during the meeting that there is a pressing need for a more nuanced and comprehensive approach to managing our floodplains. By heeding the call to establish a subcommittee, we demonstrate our commitment to foresting collaborative and informed decision-making process within our community. Furthermore, I believe that embracing the proposal put forth by our Planning Board not only reflects positively on our willingness to engage with stakeholders, but also reaffirms our dedication to prioritizing the safety and well-being of our residents. In conclusion, I urge the Commissioners to seize this opportunity to partner with our Planning Board and establish a subcommittee dedicated to examining our floodplain ordinance. Together, we can work towards developing solutions that not only address the immediate concerns raised by our community, but also lay the foundation for a more resilient and sustainable future. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you, Lewis.
Thank you.
Mr. McLarnie, Bill, there you are. Thanks for being here.
Good evening. Thank you. My name is Bill McLarnie, I'm here primarily in my capacity as a long-term resident of Macon County and property owner, including a substantial piece of floodplain on the Little Tennessee River. I'm gonna start by saying one thing that I'll bet everybody in the room can agree on, and that is that this meeting is probably gonna go on too long. So, in a feeble attempt to mitigate that, I'm going to try and summarize some points that have been made by various people during the days and weeks that this has been a hot issue, and I've been able to identify about 12 different discreet reasons why we should maintain the current floodplain ordinance. One is that nature designs floodplains, and when we try to engineer them out of existence, we often wind up outsmarting ourselves. Also, we should maintain the ordinance because of the need to protect our unique Southern Appalachian biodiversity, which I believe we all are proud of. We should also protect the floodplain ordinance in order to protect and preserve valuable floodplain farmlands for agriculture, which is an integral part of our society, because the Little Tennessee and our rivers and floodplains in general are extremely valuable recreational resources for traditional local use and also for use by visitors who contribute to the economy of the county. Because impacting the floodplain tends to impact water quality, maintaining water quality is always going to be a challenge, it's going to be more of a challenge to the extent that we impact the floodplain, thereby increasing potential costs for both drinking water and wastewater treatment. Public safety suffers when we develop excessively in the floodplain. Jason has cited the example of Crusoe in Haywood County, there are others where massive loss of, massive property damage and loss of life has occurred, and we need to prevent that. That brings up the ancillary issue of the fact that county personnel are required to respond to flood situations. It costs the county money, it also may put county personnel in danger if they're required to perform rescue and salvage operations. We should do everything we can to mitigate those costs and those risks. Developing in the floodplain increases insurance costs, and I think maybe one of the most important points is that the existing flood, the adoption of the existing floodplain ordinance established Macon County as a regional leader, and we should reflect pride in that, that a previous government took the trouble to try and craft something that protects and benefits everybody. Also, floodplain management is a property rights issue. If I make a structural modification to get floodwater off my property, I may think I'm exercising my property rights, but potentially I'm passing that damage on down to all the other property owners downstream. That leads to what one of the participants in the Planning Board meeting said, which is that we should abide by the golden rule, do unto others, everybody knows that rule. The golden rule does not allow for me solving my problem by tossing it over the fence on your side. And finally, a reason that ought to resonate with this group as an elected body, I think there's a very broad base of popular support for maintaining the existing floodplain ordinance. So, one point in conclusion, the existing ordinance is the result of an awful lot of hard work by a lot of people over a period of months and years. County Commissioners, Planning Board, Watershed Council, experts of various kinds of ordinary citizens. They came, they made a wise decision, I think, one that protects us all. Fortunately, right now, the correct decision is the easy decision. We have been given an excellent tool for managing our floodplains, and I think we should retain that tool. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Angela, Ms. Martin Faye, there she is.
Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak tonight. The only thing I have to add to what Jason Love and Dr. McLarnie just said about the Little Tennessee River watershed is that it's my business. It, the condition of the river when it rains and after flood events, it's recovery time, all of that has an impact on my river business, particularly in the warm season. Just also, you know, the animals that live in the river are definitely impacted, the aquatic bugs affect the trout fishing. You know, ecotourism is not a huge industry in Macon County yet, but I'll tell you, as I said at the Planning Board meeting before, it's gonna be growing, and I want it to be viable in the future for this watershed. I think what sets us apart from the other rivers, as I told the Planning Board, is that the Shetuga, you know, has its whitewater, the Tuckassee G is a wonderful fly fishing destination, it's got, you know, it's a little more exciting than the Little Tennessee. And of course, the Nantahala has NOC, and it's just exciting. So, what's different about us? It's the fishing, it's the trout fishing, and it's my eco-tours where I highlight the birds more than anything. Eighty percent of my clients are there to look at wetland species, birds. We have, we're blessed with this Atlantic Flyway that goes over our watershed. We have, arguably, we have more birds than any contiguous river on the eastern seaboard that's not also coastal. So, it's just, Dr. McLarnie's collected all this data over the years, and it's just what shines about us, is our biodiversity, and my job is to highlight it and to, my favorite thing is for tourists that come here, that are thinking about moving here, is to make them care as deeply as we all do in this room and want to be stewards of this place, like you all are stewards, and I'm a steward, and everybody in here is a steward of this beautiful, fragile watershed. We want them to care deeply about it, and that's part of why I do what I do, and also so I can work outside. So, thank you so much for the opportunity to talk. I won't waste any more of your time, I think y'all know everything about how I feel about that river, so thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Martin. Susan Irvin, excuse me, Ms. Irvin.
Hello, I am Susan Irvin. I sent you all a letter yesterday, I hope you got it and had a chance to read it, but I'm a 40-year resident of Macon County. I was on the Planning Board when we wrote the floodplain ordinance, along with Lewis. A sizable portion of our personal property is in floodplain, and we have stress and mass from existing flooding, and would definitely suffer from additional flooding if there is much fill in the floodplain. The fact that fill raises flood levels is not an opinion, it's a fact. Filling one small piece might not cause problems, but filling many pieces definitely would cause problems. Some say only minor changes are being proposed, but if we roll back to the FEMA standards ordinance, that allows any and all fill in the floodplain, excepting only the floodway. Protective ordinances like this are not a violation of property rights, they are protecting property rights. A property owner does not have the right to impinge on other owners, a property owner does not have the right to pollute. Our river is in much better shape than those in neighboring areas, and this ordinance is one of the main reasons why. The town is now considering adopting the same provisions for floodplain protection that the county has in place. What a step backward it would be for the county to drop those protections. Lewis referred to the May 2nd Planning Board meeting and the Planning Board's request for more time to study and to form a committee, and I urge you also to let that committee be formed and to accept the recommendations and work of the Planning Board, which has been appointed to address these issues. I ask you not to act hastily to change an ordinance that is providing protection to all of us who have floodplain property, who farm bottom lands, who have river-related businesses, who enjoy the river for recreation, and who value the health and beauty of our streams. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Irvin.
Thank you.
Sarah, there you are. Johnson, Ms. Johnson.
Good evening, my name is Sarah Johnson. I'm a seventh-generation citizen of Macon County. I speak to you tonight about the proposed Little Tennessee floodplain ordinance change regarding the fill dirt. Many in my community like the law as it is. We see the county's strict regulations on the floodplain as benefit to many downstream. Weakening the floodplain ordinance risks damaging our unique ecology, our scenic beauty, and our cultural heritage surrounding the river. Otto has a lot of underrated beauty in its waters. As a kid, I got to see the beautiful but endangered turquoise shiners. I want my son to see them too. The Little Tennessee River watershed is America's first native fish conservation area for a reason. We are unique among all the rivers in the South, meaning that it's habitat to most of the freshwater fauna that was here originally, and we have the highest diversity of freshwater mussels on the globe. These creatures clean the water and filter it. They are worth protection and a lot of respect. Our biodiversity is priceless. It is among the region's richest recreation and tourism economies. Today, the outdoor economy contributes $28 billion to the North Carolina economy annually, creating 260,000 jobs in North Carolina and generating $124.5 billion in federal, state, and local tax. There is money in this wild beauty, and it supports our economy more than people realize. Government regulation is not always a dirty word, and it helps us protect our natural scenic beauty. These areas that make up the floodplain landscape have an intrinsic value to our agricultural community, especially as farmland is becoming more scarce. You allow fill dirt, you run the risk of letting everybody pave it over, like they did. And while normal flooding fertilizes the fields, catastrophic flooding scours them. Our concern is that weakening the protections on the floodplain would set up a situation that slowly picks at the health of the river and the safety of those downstream. These areas have an undervalued function, they slow down the floodwaters before they reach Franklin. Macon County sees anywhere from 50 to 60 inches of rainfall annually, with Highlands seeing 100 inches, the highest in the state. We don't flood like the rest of North Carolina, so our flood regulations have to be different. We have serious concerns about possible future impacts when the river's ability to flood is naturally channelized, causing it to flow deeper and faster. If the natural floodplain in Otto is restricted with levees, roads, and structures to the point that the water cannot move freely on the floodplain, then this narrowing of the natural water course causes the river to flow faster, deeper, and increases the risk of catastrophic flood damage. All that extra water will stress the aging Lake Emery Dam, which no one wants to see the damage caused by all those old pollutants buried in the sediment washing down Needmore. Needmore is one of the last cradles of freshwater aquatic life in America. It is worth strict protection. I have lived to see this river reach 441 and flood the fairgrounds and reach to the bottom of Town Hill. My mother has seen it happen several times. The data record confirms that these 100-year events are happening more frequently. The same floods that damaged the river's ecology also cause property damage, and most importantly, loss of life. At the Planning Board meeting, Mr. Culpepper referenced an RV park that could not be built, claiming part of the decline in the Otto community was due to the strict floodplain ordinance. Otto was struggling long before that. We point out that RV parks are prone to issues with sewage flowing into nearby waterways, and that one of the reasons the RV park in Gibson Bottoms didn't pan out was because of the sewage. Otto deserves clean water, not more RV parks. As was mentioned at the Planning Board, there are avenues for reasonable requests. Getting an individual site-specific ordinance variance does not need the whole floodplain being thrown, protection being thrown out. Brevard, for instance, has the most strict floodplain ordinance, and they seem to be doing fine. We should recognize the benefits of keeping our existing strict water protections. We should not fight topography, physics, and Mother Nature. Please, we ask you to leave the existing floodplain ordinance as is. We also respectfully and politely ask that Commissioner Young recuse himself from any decision-making process on this matter and avoid to avoid any semblance of impropriety, however perceived. He recently purchased riverfront property in Otto adjacent to... He recently purchased riverfront property in Otto adjacent to the highway under the name Steel NC LLC before bringing this matter to the board.
Sarah.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Can I just acknowledge that real fast?
That's okay. You're on the agenda over here.
That's okay.
Pardon me? Okay. David, you look like the devil, but I'm a gentleman.
Gentlemen, ladies, um, thank you. Yeah, first, I'm not here as a town council member, but as a town council member, I don't think that the town is taking up changing our floodplain ordinance. That being said, I'm here as a citizen of Macon County and I did bring up the fact that the floodplain ordinance hurt somebody in Otto. It didn't just hurt him, they actually went bankrupt after they already hit the infrastructure in to put that RV park in. That being said, I'll try to be brief. I'm a canoeer, a kayaker, and an avid outdoor explorer and adventurer. I live here for a reason because I love the outdoors. I advocate for outdoor recreation opportunities every single chance that somebody will listen to me. I think outdoor recreation is severely underfunded in the town and the county, although the town's working on that and the county is also beginning to come around to more recreational We are part of nature. We're part of the outdoor environment. We, you can't, you can't remove man from nature and just say, well, nature is this over here and man is over here. We are fundamentally part of it. I love fish, I love animals. I love fish and animals and wildlife and nature more than I like people. But that being said, people need protection from the acts of man, just like nature needs protection from the acts of man. We all know government is not always benevolent. We know that government does things and makes poor decisions. Whatever party you are, you know the other party's wrong and makes horrible decisions. So government is not infallible. Whatever the intentions of the floodplain ordinance were then, we know that it's not operating as good as it could. We know that it's trapping people. We know that landowners are being turned into criminals for things as simple as putting a driveway in. That's not really fair. It's not just and we know that. We now know it after years and years and years of this floodplain ordinance being passed. We know that it traps people and they get an NOV and it says they're gonna get fined like $5,000 a day until they correct it and there needs to be some sort of pressure relief valve, if not just going to the state ordinance. Reflecting on the state ordinance, the amount of time and effort that's put into something, it doesn't make it any less of a mistake when it fails to do the things that it was designed to do. I was somewhat misrepresented in one of the papers in so much that, I'm not encouraging fill. I'm not gonna go put a sign out there that says, "Put fill in our floodplain." It'd be ideal if we didn't get fill in the floodplain. I'm not pro- fill, but I am pro a man or a woman being able to use their property and have access to their property. And right now, there are properties that have no available access because the floodplain ordinance does not have provisions that allow for that. At the county rec commission board meeting this morning that I sit on, it was talked about how the rec park is within the town's floodplain ordinance jurisdiction and how that is a huge benefit because we're actually able to use the rec park. We're gonna be able to redevelop it because the town's floodplain ordinance is not as strict as the county's. It's difficult to put outdoor recreational opportunities in the county with our current floodplain ordinance. That's another caveat that needs to be changed, another relief valve that needs looking into. As far as soil in the rivers, our soil erosion ordinance does cover that. So if a man needs or a woman needs to put some fill in the floodplain to access or use their land, I'm okay with that. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, David.
I'm okay. I'm just gonna respond to her, but really, I'm a big boy. I'm okay.
Did you wanna say anything within this five minutes or do we wait till we get over here? Ever name?
You wanna switch?
Yeah, but you would have a panel.
Well, I'm the next one.
We'll wait till.
Okay.
I guess I could say, anybody else? That concludes our meeting with the public comment period. Let me give that over there. The additions to the agenda. Do we have, Ms. Rowland, addition to the agenda? Or any of the commissioners, you have additions to the agenda?
I'm sorry.
I have one.
Okay. Where does it go under?
Consent agenda along with the other budget amendments. I have laid a budget number 271 at each of your faces. If we could add that in with 12, please.
Well, C.
Well, B. Budget number 271. Thank you.
Like to delete some. Daddy hadn't had supper.
Computer, save paper.
All right. So we just had one additions to the agenda, one addition. I would have a motion to the judgment's approval of the agenda.
Slow move, Chairman.
Say.
Any further discussion? All in agreement? Thank you very much. So Russ, are you, you were up here a while ago, you wanna do it again? This is, Ms. Rowland, anything you need to say about this meeting here that also C covers the town and the Highlands or anything you need to say about this meeting?
Yeah, I think Russ, you know, with the opioid funding Macon County's receiving, much of the western region, like Macon County, has been southwestern commission, as they do so many times, has taken the lead on this initiative from a regional standpoint and has done some legwork with the Omni Foundation here that Russ is about to share with us in terms of what can we do as a region with the opioid funding. So I think, you know, that the counties in the west and Russ can certainly speak to it better than I have just taken the approach of, you know, to take our time with this. We realize this money is to be used over many years and we just wanna be sure that we have all the information and that we're using the funds in the best manner possible. So we're, much of the, many of the seven western counties are awaiting what Russ is presenting here tonight and the next steps with that. And so after Russ gets done, we can certainly speak with Ms. Owens and any representatives from the town of Highlands that are here. I know Ms. Sheila Jenkins is here with us and she had a grant opportunity that she wanted to perhaps discuss if she could.
And Ms. Kennedy, I met with her.
And Ms. Kennedy, of course.
Comment or question.
So a lot of people that are very involved in this and are very excited about this funding and what we can do with it in the community. So Russ, with that being said, glad to have you here at our annual opioid meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Thank you, Commissioners. Again, I'm Russ Harris with the southwestern commission. We are the council of governments for the seven westernmost counties here in North Carolina, the towns within those counties in the eastern band of Cherokee Indians. And most of our work's in the area of community and economic development, workforce development, and we provide services for older adults through the area agency on aging. So the topic tonight, I'm talking about opioid settlement funding, kind of touches all those areas. And when this funding got announced, you know, for the region, it's about $35 million. For Macon County, it's around $3.4 million. And that's over a period of about 18 years that that money will come down into the region. And so about a year and a half ago, we started having conversations with the counties that we're all gonna have to go through the same planning process to decide what they'd wanna do with these funds. To realize that maybe that wasn't the most efficient way to do it with limited staff, time, and resources. If everybody's gotta do the same process, why don't we join together, be more efficient, and kind of do this planning process together? Other reasons for doing a regional plan were the opportunities, you know, $35 million is a lot of money, not necessarily though when it's spread out over 18 years for a problem this big. So the idea was there may be opportunities for alignment between different counties and you could leverage those funds and make them go further if you were working together on that. And then also the opportunity to share best practices. I know the sheriff's department here is one of the first on board, kind of doing an MAT program. Other counties had interest in learning about that, so it gave us the opportunity to do that. So I'm just gonna talk briefly tonight about kind of where we are in the process, kind of the high-level fund findings up to this point. One of the decisions that this board will be faced with in terms of choosing whether you're gonna choose strategies from a list known as option A or a list known as option B, and a little bit of what the process looks like from a local government standpoint. So as the county manager mentioned, when we decided to undertake this process, we put out an RFP, we looked for a consultant that could help us. This is not our world, it's not something we know a lot about. So we ended up getting a couple of good proposals and we went with a company called the Omni Institute. So at this point, the slide in front of you shows kind of where we are in the process. We started with data collection. I passed out last time I was here some county snapshots that are on our website that show ER visits, number of deaths, things like that. And then we started doing interviews, focus groups, and we did surveys and that process ran up through December. In February, we began working on the strategic process and we brought staff from the counties together, said this is what's coming up from the regional level and we asked them to kind of vote on what the priorities were so that we could come up with a handful of priorities at the regional level. So right now, we're kind of in that implementation planning process. We've also started having meetings with every county because just because we have regional priorities doesn't mean that's what works at the local level. So we've had meetings with local governments to figure out, do these priorities match up with what your priorities are on the ground? So we won't only come out of this with a regional plan, but each county, we're gonna have a specific plan for themselves as well. We'll also have an evaluation plan as part of this. Over 18 years, we know we're not gonna, you know, we're gonna get four years down the road and realize we need to adjust a little bit. So we want a process in there that local governments can go look and see if it's working, if it's not working, and how do we adjust as we move forward. This slide really just says a lot of the same about kind of what that process has been. The choice of what you do with your funds belongs to this government. No Macon County funds get spent unless this board votes and decides on what to do with those. So kind of the point of tonight is to kind of give that 30,000-foot view of what that process looks like. So at the regional level, some of the strengths that came out of that were that there were existing treatment options within the region. There's a strong history of collaborative partnerships and there's already a lot of people that are working to reduce and prevent overdose deaths across the region. Now, in terms of opportunities, kind of what came back was like, while we have those things, there aren't enough of those things. We still need more treatment opportunities, we need more connections to care, people knowing where they can go to find out where to go get treatment and assistance with this issue. And then also just the amount of stigma in the region, a lot of folks don't feel comfortable getting help within their own communities. So working on the stigma and people feeling safe, you know, like they can get that assistance when they need to. So the top three regional strategies that kind of rose to the top were recovery support services, things like peer support, where someone who's lived that life and been through that experience can help people in need, post overdose response teams, being able to go to folks that have been through an overdose within 24 to 72 hours. There's an opportunity to get them to make a choice at that point to maybe get treatment so you've got a team that goes and follows up with those folks. And then naloxone distribution was the other one that came out at the regional level. In Macon County, the top priority was connections to care and treatment for opioid use disorder. And then highlights from the open-ended survey responses just kind of pointed out that you already have a lot going on in Macon County. I was talking to Sheila beforehand, when we've gone around and looked across the region, I mean, it may not feel like it all the time, but Macon County's a little bit ahead of some of the other counties in terms of having options for people to get help and that's what came out in the survey as well. In terms of other needs, support and education for things like naloxone, transportation to maintain access to treatment. A lot of the treatment options are not here locally. You may need transportation to get other places, so having that. And then transitional recovery housing for people that are in recovery, but having a safe place where they're not going back into the community they came from afterwards. So as I mentioned, one of the choices you'll have to make is kind of which menu you choose your strategy out of. So there's option A and there's option B. Option A is 12 strategies that have proven to be effective. There's a lot of data out there on these. Right now, in the state of North Carolina, and this slide was made a couple of weeks ago, so it may be off by one or two, but 58 local governments have chosen to go with option A. If you choose option A, you vote as a governing board, we wanna do this option out of option A, you're pretty much ready to go to MAR with that. Option B is a little more lengthy planning process in addition to what we've already done. It's more reporting. Right now, only seven governments in the state of North Carolina have chosen option B. We had one of our local governments here in the west that chose option B, went to the state and the state said, "You don't wanna choose option B." And really helped them take what they wanted to do and find a way that it worked within option A. Just option A is a much lighter lift, for a better way to put that. It's proven strategies. If you go option B, you've gotta do a little more of proving that what you wanna do works. So again, the three strategies were recovery support services, post overdose response team, and naloxone distribution. So this is the option A strategies. So all 12 of these are approved by the state. So you've got collaborative strategic planning, evidence-based addiction treatment, recovery support services, recovery housing, employment-related services, early intervention, naloxone distribution, post overdose response team, syringe service program, criminal justice diversion programs, addiction treatment for incarcerated persons and reentry programs. So the ones in light blue are the ones that were the regional strategies that were voted on as priorities, so they all match up with option A. I'm not gonna read through the option B list, but again, it's a little bit more outside the box. It's about a five-page list. And again, if you go that way, then there's a heavier process you go into if you wanna go that way. And we can certainly, if the county were to decide they wanna go that way, we can have the consultants kind of dig in a little deeper with what that process is.
And we've had a meeting with option A with you and other people.
We had the North Carolina Association for County Commissioners, their opioid team, and we had one with the Omni Institute, the consultants, kind of talking about some of the things you all may be thinking about and how they fit with option A. So this is the process for the county to start spending your funds. The first one is to establish a separate fund, which has already been done here in Macon County. You keep those funds separate than other funding. Consultants made this and in my opinion, actually, three should be in front of two. So that's where you decide, do you wanna go option A or do you wanna go option B in terms of strategies? And then the next one, authorized spending, so you vote as a board, we wanna do X strategy. You can do this as many times as you want. You know, you may have, say, "Look, we wanna do a naloxone distribution. We know that's a need. It's not a big-ticket item, but we do wanna put some money towards it." You come back the next month, you do another strategy. You don't have to do all this at one time. So you decide on what you wanna do, you understand and follow the reporting requirements, which I've got a slide on that in a minute, which your county staff have already had to do, even though you didn't spend money last year, you still had to do the reporting requirement. And then you hold an annual meeting, which you're doing here this evening. And this is just the reporting requirement. So you voted on it, vote on it as a board, within 90 days, you turn in this local spending authorization report to the state and then you're good to go with that strategy. Option B, reporting recommendations, if you go that way, it's a separate report that you turn in. Annual financial report, do it within 90 days at the end of the fiscal year, which you did last year, even though you didn't spend any money. And then the annual impact report, once you start doing activities, you have to turn that in within 90 days of the end of the fiscal year. And the annual meeting requirement, once again. So that is a couple hours of content into about 10 minutes in the interest of making it brief, but if you guys have any questions, I'm happy to try to answer them. Again, it's not my area of expertise, but I can always get back to you with an answer if I don't know it this evening.
See, Russ, I believe you've got the whole region eight, right?
Yes, we got the seven western counties.
Good rule of thumb.
Are all involved.
What's the timeframe on this, Russ?
So looking to be done probably in July. Right now, we would hope to have this report to be able to give to the counties. And again, it'll have a regional plan, but you'll also have a local one that kind of says, "From our conversations with your staff, this is what came out."
Like, when do we get the money?
You've got some, you've had, what, the first?
We already have some money. To date, we've received $1,214,904. We've earned $35,560 in interest. So we have $1,250,464 in the special revenue fund dedicated for this purpose.
And I think, well, we have to, what you may be leaning to, how do we access that money?
Yeah, you decide on option A or B. Yeah, you decide on Option A or B, you have to do the funding plan, a resolution. There's a couple of financial items that you have to, you as a board, have to adopt before we start spending.
Right, and I think, Mr. Roland, did we go with, we went, we looked hard at Option A that day, we looked at, felt like that was the best.
Yeah, and again, that comes back to, you know, after we get this information from Southwestern Commission, I know that, as Russ pointed out, Macon County's got one of the strongest local networks of support anywhere. So I think there, you know, that'll be something that this board will have to decide, you know, what is the course of action that we as Macon County feels best for us, and what option will allow us to take that course of action? So, it's all up to, you know, I think Option A, I think, is the widely-used option. I think only a few counties across the state have used Option B, primarily your more urban counties, Durham, things like that, that can dedicate whole staff to managing this stuff. I think A is 90%, 95% the option that is chosen. And again, that just, that deals with the strings on how you report and how you use the money and what you can do with the money. So as these things come to fruition in July, we get through this budget, and it'll be a good time to start having these conversations.
So, about the July board meeting, will have a plan for us to agree on?
No, no, I think that'll be the time we can.
Start?
Yeah.
Can I say something?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Russ here said that there have been meetings. Well, what about the folks that are on the front lines of this, that have no clue what those meetings are about? I see this firsthand daily, so does Sheila, so does Men's Challenge, the Smokies. We need to take those folks into consideration as well. And my two cents, if you go regional, you're backing up, you might as well take your $3 million, take Little Tennessee River and let them feed on Mr. Pillen's fish. That's what you want to do.
And I.
That's just my two cents.
Thanks for your two cents.
Yes, sir.
And.
For my $3 million.
Whatever it is.
Well, and I will say, just, I mean, Sheriff, we reached out repeatedly trying to get, you know, an interview with you, like, Tondas Snyder.
No, you got not?
Our consultant, Tondas Snyder, sent an email, and I sent one the day after the last time you spoke of our meeting, said, we'd love to get your input. And I sent you an email, so.
And I called you.
You did, a couple of weeks ago, and we had a great conversation.
It was a 30-second conversation?
Okay.
A 30-second conversation.
Well, and I.
Very short, to say the least.
Okay.
So feel free, come down, let's have a discussion.
Okay, absolutely. And I will say, I mean, this is why we're focused on the county level, like, we don't think that the region needs to be saying, this is what you need to do. Simply, if there's an opportunity for alignment with your neighboring county, there may be a way to make your money go further. But there is no, you're not locked into a plan. When this plan comes back to you, it's not telling you what to do, it's saying, look, this is what some of the input was, this is what the county-level plan says, and then you can take into consideration anything you want.
I guess I'll have to take a little bit of a lick on this. He's one of my former students too, so we can handle that. But we probably, I probably helped put this together and didn't bring you in to the conversation to see what A looked like. It won't happen again, I'll make sure.
You're fine, Mr. She.
But I'll make sure that you're in that, because I'm not, that day we had that. See, we had a Zoom with you, who was on this, was it me and?
I think you, Mr. Roland.
Maybe it is.
And I believe we had, yes.
Yeah, Sheila was with us. But as we move forward, I got you.
Thank you, sir, appreciate it.
Appreciate what you're doing.
Absolutely.
And for my slackness, you get a little bit of grinding on it.
That's all right, we're good.
All right, and we'll take care of that.
All right.
Yes. Hold on, Russ, you made me a question, do you hold a second?
I have taken, I've looked at Option A and Option B. And when I look at what I was talking about earlier about intervention to put things in place, Option B has particular spots for youth intervention plans. And I realize that he's told, you're talking about more reporting and more work, okay? But don't our children deserve for us to look at the best option and to put the best things in place and use this money for also for prevention? Because if we continue to go the road that we're going, and all we do is to build detox centers and rehab centers and do all that, which, don't get me wrong, I'm not here to say that those are not necessary, because we have a lot of people that need them. But I want to prevent for my daughter and for her peers to end up having to use those services in 10 years, 20 years onward. So I really implored you guys, please take a look at maybe a combination of the two, I don't know if that's possible, okay? But there really is a key piece missing in Option A, and please take that.
Is adoption for the youth that's missing in Option A?
That's missing, right, there's no, there's no prevention.
Is it possible to do a combination?
Yeah, you could do some A, you could do some B, there is, and there's no prevention piece, but as you mentioned, there's an intervention piece. So it's somebody, you can't just provide counseling in your schools in general and say, this prevents people. But if you've got a targeted group that you know is at risk, you can intervene with that.
And again, and I would say that that target group is elementary school-level children that don't have any kind of help right now when it comes to drama and things like that. So, if we could go with Option A to do the things that they, the positive things that does there, but also please take into consideration the intervention piece of Option B. And, yeah, please take care of our kids, they need help.
Thank you. Let's see, who else wanted to respond?
Sheila.
Sheila, there you are.
Oh, I needed to talk to you about a grant that's available. The first two pages, the passage I handed out, I just gave you, is about a grant. Dogwood has a grant that's sitting there with Macon County's name on it to apply for. It's a two-year grant, up to $300,000 a year. And as Russ just said, there's a lot of reporting that has to be done back to the state. There's a lot of, lot of yet work to do before you can start spending. And with this grant money, it's called a planning grant, but with this grant, you can take it and contract out, get somebody to come in and help get all that set up. Because when you start putting it towards the end of the state, you've got to say, we're going to put this much money towards this and so much money towards each strategy that you decide to pick, whichever one you go with. This grant is pretty open-ended, I've talked to them, it's a rolling grant, you can apply anytime. It's not a real difficult grant to do, because it's a planning grant, so you don't have to have all the answers. You just have to have kind of an idea of what you might want to do as far as if you wanted to contract somebody out to help out with it. There's another thing that I had talked to some people about is, we don't have real-time data. Even like with COVID, you know, when we meant to do things after COVID and you looked at data, it was two years old. Well, data was drastically changed through COVID. I mean, anytime you look something up, the data is usually about two years old. So we don't have any real-time data, I just lost out on two different grants because we didn't have data. With this grant, I would hope that we would look, I mean, maybe you could look and consider us having our own data system here just in town. I've talked to some IT people already, and to where we can keep our own data. That data can be used by anybody to write grants from, which would bring more money into the county. The school could use it, the hospital, anybody could use that, those data numbers that would help us to be able to get grants. If you look, it looks like we don't have any homeless, if you look at the data. We, take my word for it, we do have homeless, we have a lot of homeless, our homeless numbers are the highest they've ever been. And so, but if you look at the data, I'm just not on a housing grant, because our data looks like we've got it out of control. Well, we know we don't. But we can sit here and say, we know we don't, but if the numbers are not on paper, it's not going to do us any good. Everything's driven by data, so.
Well now, Sheila, who's supposed to be in charge of collecting the data, and who's supposed to be in charge of keeping the data? I mean, I've heard you reference this before, how do we do that?
Well, if you can have a hub, you can decide on who you want to have a hub, the county can be a hub. Anybody could be a hub to make sure that we collect it. Each individual, like EMS, they can pull up their data. Warrens went through it and pulled up data that shows, you know, how many overdoses they've worked with. Everybody, not everybody, but a lot of people already have some data that they have, but it's not compiled, and it don't get to where it needs to go, we have it in front of us, but it's not compiled. The Sheriff's Department could talk about, you know, they're, one of the numbers that I asked for in about was how many parents are in jail that represent, how many children are represented in the community from the inmates. You know, those type numbers are numbers, it's what's going to get us a grant. So if everybody, you know, just one person put it into the, a data system that we could all, the ones that need to collect, everybody don't need into it, but I'm talking about number of like foster kids, inmates, overdoses, all that type. Then if we could collect that and have it, then, and no one door is willing to do whatever.
Well, and I don't want to drag this out, but I mean, are other counties in our region collecting data, and we're not?
They are in certain, some of them look better than us.
My question to you is, can you help reach out, see how they're doing and what they're doing, and maybe report back to us? And I don't mind to look into it, I hate to miss grants because we don't have data, but.
Yeah.
I don't know.
We need to, and I actually, I contract out to Simon, who works for County IT, and I've talked to him, and he's already looking into some of that stuff.
Maybe that's the first step.
So, but this grant, I think, would be beneficial. County has to apply for it because you have the money, but any questions?
What are the conditions of the grant?
No match, no, no anything, it's just a heavy plant. Dogwood's pretty flexible with this, and their grants are not that hard to do compared to state and federal grants.
And what would you apply, what's the amount?
You can apply up to $300,000 for two years in a row.
And that's private?
Dogwood Trust.
Yeah.
And Derek and I've talked about it.
Yeah, I know, you know, just kind of wanted to get the board's feelings on it, and, you know, we're always happy to do whatever we can.
Yeah, I love going after private-funded grants as opposed to public-funded grants, so.
It's.
What do you, what actions needs to occur?
It can be done at any time, because it's considered a rolling grant, so.
Would you just give a consensus to?
Just need to do it.
To initiate the grant, the grant application?
Put it together.
Would you be doing that, or who's doing that?
I can help, I don't, you know, Derek and I have to say kind of what you think you want to do. I mean, like I said, you don't have to have all the answers, but if you want to, thinking about contracting out to get somebody to maybe help with some of the initial stuff that has to be done for the reporting, that would be one thing you could put in there. If you want to, you know, how many of you know we have a post-opioid response team? Do you know that?
What?
We have a post-opioid response team, there's one exists. It, they need, it's through EMS, it's down to about one person and they could use some, I think Warren could have some input to the planning grant. Grant might have some input for the planning grant. Right now, the most vulnerable group for overdoses is the ones that are coming out of jail, the ones that are coming out of rehab, that's the vulnerable group right now that are dying.
No. I think you'd have a consensus to proceed applying for a privately-funded Dogwood Trust grant.
Do you want to do, do you want to bring the proposal back to the board? In other words, do we want to look, you know, after the two years of $300,000, how much operating cost are we left with after that? What does the future look like after the grant runs out?
Well, I feel like what she's asking is not to apply for it, but she needs data to apply.
No, we can apply for this one, because it's a planning grant. The data that I was talking about is for future grants for any of us that are out here trying to get grants to bring into the county for things. If we don't have data, we lose them.
But you can apply for this without the data?
Yes, this can go ahead, and you can apply for this tomorrow.
And if it's data collection, like if it's something that, you know, somebody's going to come in and get all this and gather it and make it current, and it's kind of a want-to-do thing, or is it a, is it an operation, is it an ongoing operational cost?
There's the possibility, I mean, that's something you have to decide what you want.
And that's why I was saying, should we bring the proposal back? That way, if the board sees the proposal, they'll know kind of the outs and ends of it, at least with that respect. Because if the $300,000 goes out in year two and then year three rolls around, is the board going to be, are we going to be asked to come up?
We're going through that now.
You said this could be a rolling.
It's rolling to apply for it, there's not a timeframe, you can apply for it anytime. And that's, and I'm just going to throw this in, we have, in planning, it's got to be sustainable, because the money, this, you got the most money right now you're ever going to have. And you got to figure out, okay, we got to make whatever we start, we don't want to stop it. So it's got to be sustainable as the future goes on. And two, this money that's coming in, I think, Russ may know, aren't there two more out there lawsuits that's not been?
I think there's more money coming.
There'll be more money coming, but there's also that possibility that if anybody goes bankrupt, they can, that money stops, whatever they're supposed to be sending over the 18 years. If they go bankrupt, then we're not going to get that money. So you, you've, it's not money that's just going to be coming in, that's, you know, you can take it and run with it. It's got to be money that we got to sustain. And I've met with quite a few people like Men's Challenge, and we're all wanting to work together instead of competing. I think that's the only way to go, is for us to all come together and try to see what we can do, all of us together.
How's this been working with Men's Challenge?
Men's Challenge, well, my, you know, they've got a new director, Michael, and he's, he's great. And I think there's some things that we've been talking about that we can work together. Like, we can provide classes, we do a lot of classes, so we can provide classes to them, drug education, that type of thing. There's also a transportation thing that we're having to try to work out, because you have to, we have to leave the county almost for all services. We put two, anywhere from 2,500 to 3,000 miles on vehicles that you're in one month to get people to get services. So, and he has to take his out of town to get their stuff done.
Services.
Yeah, and we have to, so we were trying to see if there was a way that we could coordinate transportation. So, there's a lot of things already going, and we just need to come, I just feel like we need to be grateful we could come together. But Brent's got, Brent detoxes everybody, and they go in. Are detention officers, is that what they used to do, is that what they're prepared to do? About everybody that's arrested now, they have to detox. So why don't we start in jail with as much as we can, providing rehab services in jail? Brent and I have met a lot, it's not got a lot of room, but there are some things that we're already doing, but there's some things that we'd like to do better.
I think one thing that makes, I'm going to say, makes Gary Shield shy, because we're going through a budget thing right now, and having been on the ESSER committee over two years, we knew that that ESSER money was going to end up, it's gone in '24. That left a big void, a need void. And now we're trying to work in some situations, how to maintain the quality that we were doing, sustaining with what funds, and we'll talk about that a little bit later in another item. But that's, that's what makes you a little nervous, is trying to sustain something, you get something for two or three years, then it's your baby after that. And how do you, what do you bring in the money without raising taxes and things like that, how do you do that?
But I think if we, there's a lot, like I said, there's a lot of services that I think that we can just expand upon that's not going to cost any, not going to cost a lot extra, once we get the initial setup done. That's the whole goal of what we're trying to do, is to collaborate, see what we can do, come together to do, and then, and work together. And two, and the research I've done, and Russ may have seen it too, and Brent, it actually, the less people you have going to jail, you're going to wind up saving money. The more people we can get out here and get them a job, you're, it's going to be, it's going to be an asset to the community. But the more people that we can get well on their feet, that's going to save money for everybody. But, and there are programs in A. But, and there are programs in A for the schools, it's for like early intervention. So it's in there. I think that we have to look, and I don't want to take it up to the shot, but I think we have to look, as we had said, and you said Derek had told you that mental health is not really, it covers a lot of things. Well, now it's mostly called, it's usually, the word is behavioral health now. Mental health is not used a whole lot anymore, but it's called behavioral health, which covers substance use. It doesn't mean that everybody that has a problem out here can be treated one way. You've got to have different ways. There's different things that need to be took into the school, I think. I'm a big, big supporter of peer support. They're awesome. Everybody's heard me say it. And how many ti, how many kids do you think is going to relate to somebody that comes in to sit down and talk to them that has blue jeans on, tattoos, ripped jeans maybe? Or are they going to listen to somebody that's going to come in in a suit? Which one do you think they're going to relate to the most? Everybody relates to you, Mr. Shields. But I'm just saying, peer support is, it's a proven evidence based that it does work. And there are counties, there are places that they're, they are going into the schools, but that's a school thing. But I'm just saying, there's a lot of different ways. You can't, everybody that out there that has a behavioral health problem, they're not going to be cured by one way. You've got to have different.
Why has it switched to behavioral health or mental health?
Because it covers substance use, alcohol, and mental health has, I mean, they still use the word mental health, but behavioral health is what they use a lot of now because it covers more. But I'm around, anybody has any questions or anything, you know, or to find me if I'm on the heat.
Shields, I have a question for you, Russ and the sheriff. Is this drug problem growing or is it, so, I mean, out of all the talks and everything that we've done over the years and all of the drug addictions and the deaths and everything else, it is rising. So in my mind, that, the discussions of this is getting us nowhere.
Yeah.
And it's sad. So you're talking about prevention. Well, prevention happens as the chairman says, you have three places. You have home, you have your church and you have your schools. Well, our society, we need that family unit somehow, and that's why I'm so excited about the work that we're talking about at the new, or new life at the rec park. Give families a place to go where everybody can have entertainment for free. The chairman and I talked today, you take your family forward to the movie theater. By the time you pay for your ticket, you buy popcorn for everybody to drink, you've dropped a hundred dollars. A lot of people don't have a hundred dollars to entertain their family. And so this free place for entertainment, the free place for the all-inclusive playground, the pickleball courts, the covered swimming pool, all these things to bring, that's where the focus is. Because if you're out here doing needle exchanges, Narcan, everything else, I mean, people are taking advantage of that and by all means, stop transmitting diseases and stuff by used needles, but we're not doing anything to slow this process down. It's, it's gaining traction.
The main thing that I have found working with our own door for five years is that they just want to feel like that somebody cares about them, that they belong, that they fit in. And I think that's with parents and when parents feel that way, kids are going to feel that way. I don't care what, kids are going to listen to their parents. I don't care if the parents knocked them in the corner the night before, they seen them beat up mom the night before, they're going to go home, they're going to listen to those parents. And we got, we got to work on the homes.
But it's sad, like you just said a few minutes ago, that we're looking at the sheriff and the jail for detoxing these people. To, to me, these people with drug addictions and everything, the last place in the world, they need to be in, in jail, consuming his space for true criminals. Don't get me wrong, I've got it in my family, it has been for many, many years and I, I'm on both sides. So I get it, I watch it, I see all the problems, but trying to use the jail for these people is, is not the appropriate place.
It's not the answer of anything else and they committed a crime, so.
I have a question for you. Do you know statistically, for these people that are on drugs, how many of them have grown up on behavioral meds?
On behavioral meds? There's a, there's not a definite number out there for those that had got Adderall when they were kids.
Yeah.
But that's one that they have considered, you know, that I think they're afraid to turn, there's talk, but they won't turn any numbers list, I think they're afraid to. Because Adderall is definitely have, yeah, Adderall is, is, yeah, that's the right. We see people overdose.
I only ask that because, I mean, I work with kids and this is a part that we don't want to often talk about and we don't want to tackle. And the fact is, in many ways, no one wants to say, but we're raising drug addicts without wanting to really deal with that. A kid's behavioral issue has to start at home and if you want to deal with that, really love will complete, love was going to do something that no drug on this planet's ever going to be able to fix.
And, and one of the things that I'll say this, I don't have, we did a skit a few years back when Robbie Hallam was still sheriff and Derek came and we did a skit and I'll tell this to everybody, we asked the kids, all the kids, we did a skit at school, in the school. And we asked the kids some questions and Robbie has two questions and these are the two questions that stick in my mind for the whole day. He said, how many of you, or maybe Derek asked that, I can't remember, once somebody asked, how many of you have a safe person that you can go talk to, that you feel like you could sit down and tell everything? Not a child in that school, raise their hand. That's sad. Not a child, raise their hand. And that is not mental health. It's a behavioral problem, but it's not their behavioral problem, it's a behavioral problem that they're having to live in.
Those three institutions.
And the other question was, Robbie looked at him, he said, I'm not asking you, tell on yourself, but I want you to be honest, raise your hand. How many of you know someone that gets high with their parents, all but four children in that school, raise their hand. Now that, that's right there, shake you up. Thank you.
Thank you. We're in a mess and I think that's one thing that I've seen Ms. Strickland out here and we've talked about new school, new curriculum, trying to repurpose young people when they come into school on, work with them through the curriculum and we, we believe it'll work, but now it won't work overnight. You go back to those three institutions, the home, the spiritual compass and the school, you rely on everything on the school. That, that's a miracle work there. Where am I at, Paul?
You're going to ask the towns, town representatives, do they have any input tonight?
David, you got, I see you.
Amy?
Amy, anything here?
I know statutorily, you guys, you know, having to take care of helping people services, but it's a tough choice that you're going to have to make. But just know that you might have to, the other stakeholders in the community, we all know it's a problem. So we're here to help. We started out with the downtown door and giving them a building to be in from a town perspective. Doesn't matter if it's your responsibility statutorily, as people, we need to work together with the county problems. So whatever you decide, just make sure you include all the stakeholders and we'll be there to support you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry. I have a theory and I'm sure I'm not alone in this theory. People smarter than me probably developed it, but if, if you have to invest a amount of money, it seems to me if you invest it in the youth while they're young and malleable, that would be a better eternal investment than investing in jailing them or chasing them around when they're older in life. Seems like if we had to choose where the funding's going to go, put it towards the younger formative years when we can actually make a difference in their life as opposed to once they're kind of already off the rails. I mean, they need help too, but you can help over here. You may have to fund less housing them and chasing them around.
David, I agree with you completely and honestly, I mean, there's, I got honestly hundreds of testimonies just from the karate school, from kids that have grown up there and having somewhere safe to be every day, all year long. And now that they're adults, for them to call me back and let me know what that was like for them, even though they were around the drugs, but out in a safe place and having people who actually cared to be there. So a lot of times we're dealing too much with the, the after effects of it instead of heading it off. We've got to start with these kids, you know, and every time we take everything away from these kids, we can't turn around as a county, take everything there is to do for kids away, but then turn around and be upset because we're creating a bunch of drug addicts out there. You know, it doesn't, it's really counterproductive. It starts with the kids. So instead of, I mean, I'm all for the concept of, instead of waiting for them to be on drugs, why don't we prevent that from the very beginning? Work with the kids, be there for them, create more programs for them. You know, I mean, I have a lot of kids at the karate school, but even with the number of kids that we have, we're not even making a dent in the amount of kids that are in this county. So where are all the programs for the youth? We can't sit there and keep putting money into all these things after effect and we're not dealing with the actual issue there with the kids. It starts with them. So I agree with you, man.
And I think I see Colleen nodding her head there. We've had this discussion a number of times and I think here in a few minutes we'll get down, Dave, don't you leave me, when we talk about the discussion and consideration of the revised quarter cent sales tax referendum. Don't leave me because we want to come back to that on the, but that's on TNE, we'll get to it, just hang with me, of what we want to do with that quarter cent sales tax. And people, it's a voting issue. It, it's, we've got to, we'll talk about it later. Hang with me. SC, anything else? Breck? There you are. It's nice meeting you the other day. Now, and the whole family, it's good to meet with them. John?
Well, I'm going to get started. Good evening, Mr. Chairman Shields, members of the commission, Andrew Rowland. My name is Breck Keane. I'm with Ray Ventures Group and we're from Atlanta, Georgia. And I'm here to inform you of a healthcare housing initiative that we're involved in at the Highlands Cashers House Hospital and solicit your support. I'll try to be as brief as, brief as possible and it looks like you've got some very important business to take care of later this evening. Let me start with something I think we all agree on. Healthcare is a fundamental component for a vibrant and thriving community. The presence of Angel Medical Center here in Franklin has a direct impact on the economy and the quality of life of Franklin and Macon County. The Highlands Cashers Hospital in Highlands has the exact same impact on the plateau. Running a hospital anywhere is a challenge. Operating a rural hospital is particularly challenging. And one of the greatest challenges rural hospitals have is attracting and retaining And it's a workforce that is highly trained and highly skilled and highly paid workforce. It is even particularly more challenging in Highlands because, as I submit, it's a very expensive place to live and there are very few housing options available. And that forces healthcare workers, and I'm focusing on healthcare workers because that's what we've been charged to focus on, that forces workers into long commutes and sometimes dangerous commutes. Listen, I'm a, I'm a flatlander and the number of people working at the Franklin, from Franklin that work in Highlands Cashers Hospital, that's, that drives up and, up and down that mountain scares me to death every time I take it. Doing that day in, day out is very difficult. I had a conversation with Tom Neal, the head administrator at Highlands Cashers Hospital on Friday. They currently have thirty-three full-time and part-time vacancies at that hospital. The Eckerd Living Center, it's a five-star nursing facility, is operating at seventy-five percent capacity. And that's not because of lack of demand, that's because of a lack of workers. And Tom cannot initiate new healthcare initiatives or expanding nursing services because he cannot hire and retain workers. So we were selected, Ray Ventures was selected through an RFQ process by, that was spearheaded by a concerned citizen-led group, primarily three, three gentlemen that you probably know, Jimmy Marin, Peter Pavarini and Mark Heine. And we were tasked with exploring the feasibility of developing an affordable or an attainable housing community for healthcare workers. And I want to be very clear and it's very important that this is for all healthcare workers. It is not just for Highlands Cashers Hospital workers. These are hospital workers, yes, because they have a demand there, but it will be open to a very broad spectrum of healthcare workers, including public safety workers.
Can we flip down to that slide that you're talking about, there at the Cashers Hospital?
I'm trying to. Get to.
All right, keep going, keep going. Right there it is. Is that it?
A little broader, broader context, but it's very important. It's, it's for healthcare workers, not hospital workers. The, the hospital, HCA, has very generously donated a ten acre site just below the helicopter pad there at the, on the campus of, of the Highlands Cashers Hospital.
Can you go back one to show us the dwellings?
I'm, I'm getting to that.
Okay, excuse me.
Yes, they're, they had a, in the last six months, we've been doing a lot of work. We've done extensive market studies, surveys, geotechnical work, hired a very talented team of designers. We're, we're well beyond the talking about it stage. We're well beyond the, let's get another housing study stage. We're ready to make this happen. And what we have designed is an eighty-unit community. See the context there? Between the hospital and Buck Creek Road. And it's a village, really. It's a village of cottages and townhomes and a community center and a, and a campus or kind of a community green area. Be very clear, we're, we are not and will not build a trailer park. We're building a very high-quality, energy-efficient and sustainable village. In this first phase of about sixty units, it'll be an eighteen million dollar investment in Macon County. Like everything else in life, nothing's, nothing's simple. Highlands Cashers is a very expensive place to build. Every screw, nail, two-by-four and worker has to come up and down that mountain every day. And healthcare workers are well-paid. They make more than the incomes that are typically seen in the more common affordable housing subsidy programs, the low-income housing tax credit program primarily. And the affordable rents for that workforce is really serving a band of income from sixty to a hundred and sixty of the area of millions. Tax credit communities serve sixty percent and less. There's only a handful of workers at that hospital that would qualify as a tax credit So we're serving residents making fifty to a hundred and fifty thousand. So we're serving residents making fifty to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in income and rents that are affordable to those workers. We still can't just operate this as a market-rate community. We can't generate the returns to attract the investment capital. You all have participated in and heard of public-private partnerships. We're approaching this project in the spirit of a community partnerships. We are reaching out and have been in conversations with community foundations, nonprofit foundations, wealthy individuals, wealthy families, in an effort to raise the necessary capital to create an inclusive, sustainable, vibrant, and high-quality community that is affordable to the vital healthcare workers of Macon County and maintain that affordability for, for decades to come. And members of the commission, I'm not here asking the county for, for financial assistance. I'm not here asking for a contribution. I'm not asking for tax abatement. At this stage of our progression, I'm simply asking for your support.
Can we put that in a motion and get that on record?
We have drafted a form of a resolution that would just simply express your support for, for our efforts. And that support would be instrumentally important as we proceed with fundraising from these community groups and presentations with the Town of Highlands as we negotiate water and sewer rights for that property. Just a little color, this is the proposed Phase One, sixty units. Buck Creek Roads to your left, hospitals to the, to the north of the plan. We're proposing one-bedroom, two-bedroom, and a few three-bedroom cottages and townhomes in both a one-story, two-story configuration and even a three-story configuration. Uh, this slide very quickly shows you the the income levels and income brackets that we were targeting. And this was based upon a surveys and market studies and, and spending a day with healthcare workers at the hospital, understanding their needs and their income levels. And as you can see, we're basically serving the workforce between fifty and a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year. I was trying to follow you in my booklet on my computer, but did you go over rent rates with us? Not yet. Well, it's a big page full of numbers here, but. Like some people call affordable rent, twenty-five hundred dollars a month, two thousand dollars a month sometimes. In Highlands, North Carolina, a highly skilled or trained nurse or beginning doctor making a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year, he can afford a twenty-five hundred dollars a month. But he can't find twenty-five hundred dollar a month accommodations in Highlands, North Carolina. He can't, he's not ready to buy a three-point-five-million-dollar house yet. Or he can't buy a three-point-five-million-dollar house yet. And that's the top end of the range. You can see on this, this screen, there are rents from, I'll get my glasses back on, I apologize. I lost them. It's nine-seventy to twenty-eight hundred. Their, their rents ranging from nine-seventy to twenty-five hundred dollars a month. Average is about seventeen a month. There, there are two-bedroom mobile homes and outside of Highlands renting for twenty-three hundred dollars a month. There are garage apartments in downtown Highlands renting for three thousand dollars a month. These rents are affordable to that workforce. These rents are not affordable to someone working at the restaurant or washing dishes at the restaurant. It's not meant to be. It's meant to be affordable for healthcare workers.
Where are your sewer and water plans out there?
The Town of Highlands currently serves that hospital on the, on the town system. That entire site is governed by a water and sewer agreement that was executed over thirty years ago when the hospital was first built. There is capacity to service this development. But the agreement does not specifically identify this project, you know, on the, on the campus of, of the hospital. So our negotiations with the, with the town is to acknowledge that this development does, one is desperately needed and two can be serviced by the existing agreement that is in place with, with, with the town and to honor that agreement, basically.
So what is like, what's the support that you need from us?
I'm sorry?
What is the support that you need from us? You said it's not financial?
Simply resolution of support.
And the resolution's in our packet.
We drafted a resolution. Manager Roland has, has seen it. I believe your county council has, has also seen it.
Oh, I think it's a good thing.
Do you have, do you have that in your presentation?
The resolution?
The resolution. See, I haven't even seen it. I think the chairman kept that and.
It's in the packet.
It is in the packet?
I've got it.
Uh, well.
It's not in my presentation.
I just think.
May have got mixed up in.
Can I just skip over it?
I just think we need to make a, some kind of a motion or something here that we support. We support this and the resolution.
If I could find the resolution, because it's not in, if it's in this packet, it's in somewhere else.
That would be.
I just went through this whole thing and see if it's.
I didn't believe it.
No, it's not.
Derek, you hiding that resolution over there?
Do you have a copy of that?
I, I do.
Been hard to overlook it in this packet, I can tell you that.
Tell Paul to get the hundred.
I apologize. I thought it was in your packet.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Don't have.
Copies for you.
Would you rate that manager?
Yeah. If you got it, you went out of my home.
All right, here we go. A resolution to the Macon County, North Carolina Board of Commissioners expressing support of Highlands Cashers Hospital Housing, Inc., and REA Ventures Group LLC efforts to develop a housing community on the Highlands Cashers Hospital campus that will be attainable to healthcare workers in Macon County. Whereas Highlands Cashers Hospital Housing, Inc., an independent not-for-profit entity, acknowledging the personal recruitment, retention, and operational constraints at the Highlands Cashers Hospital caused by the cost and severe lack of housing attainable to the healthcare workforce, issued a request for qualifications for a development partner in 2023 to explore the feasibility of a healthcare workforce housing community. And whereas in August 2023, HCHH selected REA, Selected Re Ventures Group LLC to initiate due diligence and determine feasibility of a housing community on the campus of the Highlands Cashers Hospital that will be attainable to all healthcare workers within Macon and Jackson Counties. And whereas in March 2024, HCHH and Re Ventures Group presented a conceptual community plan of approximately eighty units to the Highlands Cashers Health Foundation to build a consensus of support within the community. And whereas in April 2024, HCHH and Re Ventures Group requested the county approve a resolution of support for the proposed healthcare workforce housing development that needs to be made. Now, therefore, the Macon County Board of Commissioners hereby resolves, Section One, the recitals contained in the preamble of this resolution are incorporated by reference into the body of this resolution as if fully set forth herein. Section Two, the Macon County Board of Commissioners acknowledges the severe lack of attainable healthcare workforce housing on the Highlands Cashers Plateau and the importance of a viable and sustainable Highlands Cashers Hospital. Section Three, the Macon County Board of Commissioners acting through its governing body hereby confirms it strongly supports the proposed housing development on the Highlands Cashers Hospital campus and the benefits it will bring to the region. Section Four, that this resolution shall become effective immediately upon its passage and approval.
Phase One, what does that mean?
Phase One means eighty units, sixty units of the total eighty units.
Is that a prelude to Phase Two or?
That's right. I mean, the, the, the site can accommodate approximately eighty units. That's all you can.
Oh, so this consumes a ten acres?
That's right.
Phase One is sixty units.
And if we are successful in our fundraising efforts, hopefully we can do both phases at the same time. We started with, with sixty. We'll see where we, where we end up.
Mr. Chairman, at this time, I'd like to make a motion that we support the resolution that was presented by the county manager and read by the county manager of the Highlands Cashers.
Second, who needs that? That's.
That, that was just my copy.
I've got my.
Damn you. I think damn you has the rest.
Any further discussion on it? No, I'll vote, raise your hand.
Thank you.
Gentlemen, I thank you very much for your time and your support.
Good luck.
We'll keep you, we'll keep you informed as we, as we move forward.
Be careful going back up the mountain.
I'm staying down the mountain.
Okay. Let's see, who we got here? Pulse Work-Based Learning Partnership. Mr. Jenkins and Ms. Colleen, y'all teaming up or supporting each other? Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. Ms. Strickland and I are here tonight about an exciting program, I think, for the future of not only our school system, our students, but our workforce in Macon County. The Macon Pulse Program, which stands for Partners United Learning and Skills Exchange Internship Program, is designed to provide CTE students, concentrators, which CTE is Career and Technical Education. Anyway, it provides student concentrators with real-world experience, enhancing their skill set and preparing them for future careers while providing them with the resources to achieve these goals. This proposed partnership would be between the county, the local school system, and the business community. It would offer many benefits to our community. Local government would see talent retained in our communities and increase members of skilled workers and incentivize economic growth and development. Employers would develop a well-prepared, highly-engaged workforce with the hands-on experience and skills necessary to succeed in the workforce. Most importantly, students would learn and earn on a clear pathway to success while building confidence, motivation, and skills they need to succeed in the workplace and life. Schools support students to and through their graduation and until opportunities continue their education at local colleges and universities where they would earn degrees and credentials aligned with their career ambitions. This internship, which Ms. Strickland's going to get into weeds with you for a few minutes, has actually would be a stopping for the students who would go under, who would complete this internship program. As we all know, I think there's two things at play here. We lose a lot of students outside our community when they go out of town to work. This shows them that there are opportunities, this would show them that there are opportunities in our community for gainful employment and careers. It would also improve our workforce dramatically with homegrown talent. The Business Advisory Committee with the school system has reviewed this program, the proposed program, and have signed off on it, I think Mr. Shields, you're at that program or that meeting unanimously. And I would like to commend not only Ms. Strickland, but Josh Brooks and the whole team at the CTE program for, for formulating this program. And I'll turn it over to Ms. Strickland to tell you about it, the details.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you. Well, thank you, Mr. Jenkins, for that nice introduction overview of the Macon Pulse internship program. And just as I look around the room this evening, there are so many people in here who have contributed to make this come to fruition. One was starting with a partnership to look at the courses that we're offering in Macon County so that we could have a really strong set of pathways for students. And we are entering into the fourth year, next school year will be our fourth year on that journey. And because of that, we have these students who are graduating with these high-quality credentials, ready to be hired. And so on May thirtieth, we'll be having a credential celebration at the Performing Arts Center for fifty-five students who are graduating, ready to work with credentials. But what we'd like to do is expand upon a program that some other people in this room helped us get together. We implemented the Panther Pulse internship program through our public safety classes. And we did that in collaboration with Derek Roland and Sheriff Holbrooks and Warren Cave. And we have had students going out and doing many internships or work-based shadowing out at EMS, at the fire department. They've been doing ride-alongs. They've been at nine-one-one. And everyone who's worked with these kids have been incredibly impressed and want more. We also have students who can do internships. And when students become a concentrator, that means that they've done a Level One course, a Level Two course, and they've earned a credential that aligns with that pathway. So what we'd like to do is be able to offer internships to students who are seniors, who are concentrators, and align them with businesses and professionals in Macon County so that they can spend their second semester or first semester of their senior year interns. And that would consist of a hundred and twenty hours on-site. They'd have to have an internship portfolio, a final presentation. There's a contract with the employer. There's a contract with the student and then also with the parents. And they also have to do a weekly evaluation and reflections. And then we would end that semester, that internship, with a celebration of them where they're presenting what they learned too. So we know that the internships work. We know that a couple of our students who earned EMT certification and who have been doing the ride-alongs and who've been interning with Macon County Emergency Medical have been hired. We know that our student, our first pilot, we had one pass last week. The pilot's exam has been hired by Macon Air at the airport. So we know that getting kids out into the workforce, working under professionals, learning the skills, is successful. And it helps us retain talent right here in Macon County. So we also aren't working on this on our own. We've modeled this after Surrey and Yadkin Counties who have a work-based learning program. And we found that we had all of the elements in place. We had workforce development. We had county. We had Economic Development Commission. We had a school board and our employers. But the one thing that they had that we didn't have, besides an army of workers, is they had the stipends for the students. Because we would like for our students not to choose to go and stay home or work a job that's not going to lead to continued employment. We'd like for them to do this internship so that they can aspire towards something greater. So we're asking for a thousand-dollar stipend for these students. We also, I'm a mom. I want to make sure that wherever my kids said their car was going to be if I drive by, that's where they're supposed to be. So we'd have an app for them. That would be like their time clock, their check-in. It has a GPS on it. has a GPS on it, have a weekly check-in with our CTE teacher. And then just all of the benefits that Mr. Jenkins mentioned about workforce development, developing your own workforce, your own workers, in retaining your employees here in Macon County. So it's a wonderful opportunity. Even the picture on the flyer has the kids, they're in their uniform, they've got their logo, they've got their patch. They look so good, and they are so proud, there's expectation for them. So I say all that to say, I hope you would consider this budget request for the upcoming budget.
Anything else, Colleen?
I always have something else. But actually, I did want to share with you that the Pulse Internship Program, we had all of those great elements that we mentioned, and we submitted a proposal to the National Career and Technical Education Best Practices and Innovation Conference. And we were selected as the top twenty-six presentations. And so we'll be going to Portland, Oregon in October to share about this, and we have two thirty-minute sessions. So it's quite an accomplishment to be able to go and share. And it's because of the network, it's because of the ecosystem that we have for support.
I'd like to say, though, I see Deidre sitting here. The Board of Education has been very active in all this endeavor that we're doing to enrich the curriculum at the New Franklin High School. And I want to say, your support in what y'all have been doing, seems like we're on the same page.
They're very easy to spot.
And so I want to say thank you to, I guess you're the liaison from the board to here, but I want to say thank you for what you've done. And we'll continue to work together, and it's nice to have Mr. Jenkins here, EDC, making sure that those people stay involved and understand what we're trying to do here. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, old business. Who we got here? Brother Jack Morgan.
Missengers, remember we talked about some of the issues at the Macon Early College that the Board of Commissioners asked me to look into? And last month, I asked if it'd be okay to consider having an architect look at it, come up with a proposal for what we needed to do next. And I hope in your package, you have that proposal from Loper Architectural. We found several issues with the school that need to be corrected. Of course, the obvious are those brick piers that are failing, they need to be removed, and the building needs to be repaired back. We need to make sure there's not been any moisture damage as well after we've removed that, and we need to make it look like it didn't happen. The columns out front, the ones I had pictures of that showed decay and insect damage, we cut into the, one of the brick, the brick wrapped in brick, up to about five, four-foot in high, yes it is. And we cut some brick out of the bottom to see if those posts went all the way down to the concrete slab, and they did. So that's not a good thing. They're beginning to decay from down there. So we're going to have to come up with a design to either cut those posts off with the top of the brick columns or something else. But we're going to have to do something. We're going to have the same problem we've got at the library now. The downspouts, gutters, none of them are turned away from the building. It's a slab-on-grade structure, and they've had moisture issues under the floor covering, which causes it to come up. And some of these are actually toward the middle of the building, so it's causing problems everywhere. Also, the grade around the building sometimes has a negative slope toward the structure, so we need to address that. But this architect, also left off, I'm sorry, but there's several doors that open to the outside, they don't have a cover over them. And when you have a driving, blowing rain, you get moisture in there. So he's suggesting putting covers over those. So anyway, this is his proposal for his services. This is from start to finish, design documents, bid documents, monitoring construction, right up to the final payment. He's asked for fifteen thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars to do that. And I ask for your permission, from Mr. Roland, to enter into this agreement.
What was the price on that again?
Fifteen thousand seven fifty.
Jack, he mentions testing surfaces are an exclusion, anticipated testing, exploratory concrete and moisture testing. Do we need to allow some for that now, at this point?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, we do.
And how much?
I would say five thousand.
A piece or total?
Total.
Because, of course, we'll need a budget amendment for this. So we've got fifteen seven fifty plus the five thousand.
Yes.
So twenty thousand seven fifty.
We need a resolution.
Yeah, it's under fifty K exempting it. I wasn't aware, or I had one prepared.
Yep. We can make that, if a motion's going to be made, we need to make it contingent.
Or just say add, along with the budget amendment for twenty thousand seven fifty from fund balance, general fund balance, also approve a resolution exempting it from the, I don't have the statute with me, or maybe I do, exempting it from the provisions of one forty-three dash, exempting it according to the general statute, one forty-three dash sixty-four dot thirty-two, because the estimated fee is less than fifty K.
Paul, you and John initiated this movement.
Yeah, it needs to be done. Things will fall down.
Can you carry your motion?
I make a motion that we approve funding out of the general fund balance upon...
Twenty thousand seven fifty.
Twenty thousand seven fifty.
In the resolution exempting it.
In the resolution exempting.
From the qualified base selections.
Yes.
I believe Mr. Higgins.
Seconded that.
Any further discussion? All in agreement. Thank you, sir Jack.
Thank you.
Real quick, while you're up there, oh.
Go ahead.
Library.
We'll have that ready for bid in mid-June.
Pardon?
We'll have the bid, library project, ready for bid in mid-June. You're talking about the Franklin Library? Yes.
Yeah. And then that Haida Library grand opening?
I hope about first of July. We put the floor covering down today, had a terrible time getting glue to get tacky because of humidity in that Haida go figure. Got the storage buildings delivered yesterday. What we got left to do is to trim out the electric and plumbing on the inside, and the HVAC put their vents in, and that'll be finished on the inside. The painters waiting on a dry day to paint the outside.
Rockwork done?
We've got a lot of work done there.
Rockwork?
Rockwork is done.
So Jack, you're here for me too, aren't you?
Yeah.
Thank you, Jack.
Okay, as we found out, or was brought to our attention when we had a little situation with MBI several months back, about the threat, and then all the emergency management had to go into the schools there, and there's some dead spots for the radios. Well, we checked into that because we had to for the new locker building for a BDA system. We've got that installed now, and we're waiting for NC to connect their Viper system on the twenty-ninth of this month. And after that's done, you all have already approved the money for that. After that's done, there won't be a dead spot in that school anywhere that the sheriff, the police department, the emergency management can't get a good radio signal. And that's very important. You don't want a dead spot, because that's where something will happen, shores the world, just law of physics. But anyway, what I would like to propose is testing the other schools to see if they would fail as well. I missed something there. Anyway, I have two proposals to test all the other six schools. I wouldn't, I'm not suggesting we test the high school, because probably going to do something there, or Bartram Academy, because if the high school happens, they move out of there too. But we have six other schools that need tested. We've got two proposals. One is for seventy-two hundred dollars for all six locations. We got South Macon, we got Cartic J, we've got Ola, we've got Haida, we've got Highlands to test. And we have another proposal for twelve fifty a piece, which comes to a little bit more. But what I would like for you gentlemen to do is to approve me getting one of these guys to test this. And the reason I say one of these guys, there were then fifty bucks of each other. And this is not a dig against anybody, but the technicians that one company sent to install the system, they came from Miami, Florida to do it. There's companies that are closer that I think we should use. And one of them is in Asheville. So anyway, what I'd like, would be your authority to negotiate with one of these, not to exceed seventy-five hundred dollars to test these schools, to see what we need to do next.
What about like MVI and East Franklin?
We already tested it.
Okay.
It didn't pass. I've got a proposal from one company to put, upgrade that, to put in a system in that that comes to seventy-three thousand five hundred and five dollars. And needless to say, if we test these schools and they fail, I'll be back asking for some money for that. Because I think this is something we should tend to, I really do.
Help me clarify exactly what you're testing.
We're testing for radio signals, for the two-way radios, for the emergency management.
Handheld radios when they're in the school, when they can radio back out to dispatch?
Yes. They can't get out to anybody.
Okay. Well, that's critical.
And with this system that we just installed at Macon Middle, there's amplifiers, repeaters all during this, through the school, but there's also an exterior antenna that is hooked directly to the NC Viper system down on the Georgia Road. So they'll have a direct connection that way to emergency management and the state management, which is ideal in my opinion. So that's what I ask, tell me what to do.
No, I think it's critical. What's your not to exceed?
Seventy-five hundred.
And which company was local?
Haynes Company.
Now, at this time, I make a motion to authorize Mr. Jack Morgan, County Manager Roland, to contract with Haynes Corporation not to exceed seventy-five hundred dollars for, let's say, technology improvements.
And a budget amendment for seventy-five hundred for general fund balance.
Accompanying budget amendment from fund balance. General fund balance.
That's for testing.
Testing.
Testing, all right.
Second. Either second. Need the further discussion? If not, all, go for a vote, right hand. Thank you, Brother Jack.
Thank you, Jack.
Appreciate what you do.
Thanks, Jack.
Let's see. Mr. Gibbs, are you next?
I suppose so, yes, sir, Mr. Chairman.
All right, sir.
Talking about the Macon Middle School track, what's evolved into and is required is a track replacement after some boil, boil, bore sampling showed that the track needed to be replaced. So LS3P was hired as the design professional to spec out what was needed for a brand-new track at Macon Middle School. With the help of LS3P, we released, or they released, a request for proposals, of which there were four responses to the request for a proposal. The lowest bid proposal is from a company called Geo Surfaces, to the tune of nine hundred thirty thousand one hundred and eighty dollars to replace the track. And Ms. Breeden is here, and I think that the board is recommending that you guys consider that company to replace the middle school track.
We, you want action or discussion?
Yeah, let's go for, you want me to do the motion, or just go through them or get to the discussion?
I won't do the...
Or you just go ahead for, go ahead and elaborate on what you need to say.
Have you seen some designs?
Yes, sir.
Because we appropriated fifty-seven thousand dollars to design it, and we, I didn't even know what was designed, but what's the difference? The bid now is nine thirty, and this same company, Geo Services, a year ago was six fifty.
There is, there are additional paving for handicap parking spots just outside of the track, and there's also additional drainage just on the inside of the track.
It's a big deal.
Bore, sorry. So of course, nine hundred thirty thousand one hundred eighty is the lower bid, but just to remind the board, you know, we had some money left over from the Macon Middle School renovations, and that's to the tune of seven hundred fifty thousand eight hundred dollars. So if you voted to allow the school board to move forward with this, I think we had contemplated all along that, you know, the school contracted directly with LS3P, so they're treating it as a school capital outlay, and they've put it out to bid, so they would have the contract with Geo Surfaces, but of course, the county would provide the funding, you know, again, as part of their capital outlay. So the amount you would have to appropriate would be one hundred, one hundred seventy-nine thousand three hundred and eighty dollars is the difference.
Lauren, is that taking into consideration the hundred and nine thousand dollar grant?
Well, the grant was used, I know, to pay for LS3P's fees.
That's right.
And I don't know what's left.
Is there any remaining on that?
I don't know.
That's what I'm unknown, I just looked at this earlier in the meeting and did the number.
Business finance would know that.
There should be some left, but I don't know the exact grant amount, and I don't want to speak to that, but the one seventy-nine three eighty gets us to where we need to cover just the base bid of nine thirty one eighty, unless we need contingency. I don't know, you know, if they need contingency built in or not, or if that's just something y'all would come back as you're building the track, you know.
Yeah, any project you need to have, this is pretty straightforward, so I would not think a huge contingency, but if you don't have it in there, surely something's going to happen that you're going to need.
Is there any soft, like any other soft costs?
Geotech recommended to proof roll the track before the subbase is installed, and at that point, there would be recommendations to cut any areas that were soft, and backfill them with some approved material at that time. So there is a step where we would check and confirm if we did run into anything soft before we went back through the subbase and the asphalt layer of the track. But we won't know that until the subgrids prepped and regraded and the demolition is happening on the middle of the old track.
If the grant was one hundred and nine thousand, is that what you said, Derek? One oh nine?
That's what it is, yes.
Yeah.
The contract with LS3P was fifty-five two, from what I found in the minutes earlier, so there should be about fifty-four thousand dollars. Is that enough? I mean, I don't know, I'm just talking discussion here, you know. Is fifty-four thousand enough contingency at the moment, or has LS3...
About a five percent contingency, which I think on a project of this size would be certainly reasonable. There's no building construction, we're talking about only the site work associated with the track itself.
What about warranties? Are there any warranties with this track?
There would be a warranty with the track surfaces, it's about a five-year warranty, and the estimated maintenance timeframe to recoat the top surface of the track is about seven to ten years from now. That's when they recommend to do some maintenance.
So it's going to get paved, and then a urethane cover on top of that?
Yep.
And then an impermeable surface on top of that, to keep the water from...
It's a two-layer track system, so the base layer is a urethane rubberized base layer, and then there's a structural layer of spray urethane on top of that. And the whole system together comes with a five-year warranty. And from just the manufacturer's recommendations, it's about a seven to ten-year maintenance plan, where you would resurface the top of that track with a new top layer at around the seven to ten-year mark, depending on the use of the track and the meantime.
Last track got us fifty years.
And with the camber of the track and the non-permeable surface, water should not be getting under that, so that we don't see, we should not, should not see the same problem that we've had at Franklin High School, because water...
Designed with perimeter drainage around the inside of the track, that would collect that water runoff from the track surface itself, and prevent the field water from getting onto the track.
The only reservation I have is our joint meeting in two weeks, and all the school capital projects coming up, I think it'd be healthy to have a discussion. capital projects coming up, I think it'd be healthy to have a discussion, both boards enter, you know, engaged. Um, just my two cents, I'm, I'll leave it up to you guys, whatever you want to do. I mean, I do think.
We've got a lot of expenses coming up. Huge expenses, all the way across this county, it's not just the uh, the school system, I mean, it's-
First thing, I want to wait till then to discuss it.
And so, question um, about the asphalt, I know with Danny and when we met, he said it requires four inches of asphalt, does that, is that what's planned for the new track?
We have six inches of ABC base course.
Uh-huh.
And two inches of asphalt beneath the track surface itself.
So we went from four inches of asphalt needed for this to two inches now.
Two inches with a six-inch ABC base course below that.
And so there's absolutely no way to put two and a half inches of surface over top of the existing track, fill the cracks, put two and a half inches of surface over that track, whether it be binder or surface, um, and put this um, surface over the top of that track?
Not with the recommendations of the Geotech analysis that we had done, that did boring through the track surface and the existing base course, which the Geotech evaluated as being not adequate to support a track.
I mean, my, my biggie is, and I said it a long time ago, is why do we need two million-dollar tracks two miles apart? That's, that's my reservation in this whole thing, is um, we need a, we need an adequate track at the middle school, we need a state-of-the-art track at Franklin High School, and um, and to throw a million dollars at this one, and then uh, God only knows what at the next one, um, I, I, I'd really like to uh, um, figure out ways to make an adequate track over there without going overboard, because like I said, we have a lot of expenses in this county, and so that's just my take on the um-
You'll postpone it till what the chairman said? That's not a bad idea.
I'm not trying to push it off, I just wouldn't mind their engagement on that, but-
We need to think about how long the visitor board. In our documents, when we issued the project for bidding, we put a tentative schedule as part of the scope of work, to issue a notice to proceed around June tenth, which is the first day students are not on campus at the end of school, you're right, is that right?
That's the-
No, it was the week before that, it was May, I'm getting my project.
Teachers are gone by June tenth.
Teachers are gone by June tenth, but the idea is that this project would start this summer, so that it would finish before the winter track season, and so that it would also finish before the anticipated start for the high school construction project, which will eventually require the high school track team to have a field and a track to practice on. Um, and so the idea was to try to get this project completed, to not interrupt the winter track season, and to also provide a place for the high school track team to practice during the anticipated construction project with the high school. So we could issue a notice to proceed as soon as school was out, so that we can make the best use of the summer.
Not a track builder, so my questions are, I mean, they're pure, I mean, but to me, you can only compact asphalt on two-inch lifts, right?
Asphalt is typically installed in two-inch lifts.
But I mean, so two inches, I remember when we did my driveway, we went four inches. But like, two inches is pretty thin. Am I wrong, is, is that standard track depth, is two inches?
Well, and I, I'll be honest, Josh, I can, we can reference drawings and confirm what I'm telling you is two inches, because we did have a civil engineer that worked with our Geotech engineer to design the adequate base course, so I'm thinking it's two inches, it could very well be four inches.
I would go further.
I know the baby, the baby sees so many six inches, but we did prepare the documents to apply what we think is appropriate. So I'd have to reference the drawing super far.
Because normally you put two and a half inches compact, every inch and a quarter compacted to one inch, so you put two and a half inches of asphalt, you compact it to two inches. So you can use binder, or you can use surface, um, but originally, when we were talking about this, we needed four inches of asphalt, and now we're back to two inches. We have two inches already there, and we have cracks in that, like you said, that track's been there for all these years. So if we're only gonna put two inches of asphalt, um, then it makes, it, it seems like we could fill those cracks and put fabric down, and put two and a half inches of asphalt com- uh, compressed to two inches, and put the surface over it, then you have your four inches. Um, I, I just, I mean, that's where we started with this thing, and it's just gotten, um, I mean, it, the whole thing of it is, is if, if you go in and you, you take, take one pass, the best way to do it is to take one pass, whether you use binder or surface, and not, not do binder and then surface over it. Uh, my brother does this, I mean, that's what he does for a living, and um, and I've talked to him in depth about this, and what they do in Indiana for these tracks and stuff, and that's exactly what he said, so. Uh, so anyways, but I'm good with waiting for the uh, joint meeting with the school system to make sure we're doing the right thing.
Does that fall as taught on our dates, two weeks?
Doesn't help, but I don't know how quickly you can move them.
Well, they don't, but the contractor, based on our documents, was anticipating a notice to proceed around the last week of May, first week of June, as far as planning their summer work, and planning their, their pricing to be good through that period of time.
At the latest, first week of June?
I would say we could get through first week of June.
We have our group meeting on the twenty-eighth, am I right?
The meeting's on the twenty-eighth.
Is that two?
Taking you back to the minutes of February eighth, Emily, of course, presented, uh, specs are due late March, bidding by May first through May fourteenth, notice to proceed May twenty-eighth, completion by August twenty, twenty-third, the vote was unanimous. And your investment's about nineteen percent of the total project cost. So, I don't have a dog in the fight, but just, the one-seventy-nine-three-eighty is what y'all have to come up with in addition to the funding we already have. That's about nineteen percent of the total project cost.
I think if you get it done, I mean, if, if we delay, I don't know what you're gonna bring to the table within the next two weeks. What are you gonna gain with two weeks? This kind, what do we, what do you think we-
Uh, do you, do you have the specs where you can, or I just asked?
I don't. What do we gain with, uh, delaying for two weeks? Just more talk, or what are we, what, what are we gonna gain by delaying this decision two weeks?
Discussion and possible ideas that might be better.
I hear what you're saying, but I believe I heard what you're saying, we've been cussing, discussing this for a good while.
But we're right back down to the same company that presented this plan and everything for this track originally, that, that's good, that's the lowest bidder. I mean, we've made a loop around this thing, when the professional came in here and gave us that original plan for this track, and, and now we're back to him or that company again.
How much is the parking lot of the bid?
That's seventy-one thousand, seven-hundred thousand dollars.
How much?
Seventy-one thousand dollars.
Geo Services is the top builder in the country, we knew that going in just two years ago, to build along the college tracks, Texas A&amp;M, Clemson, I mean, they're the, they're the top, Dana Williams, that's, they're the only company, but we've had many discussions on how to build tracks, uh, Macon Middle School, and I'm just flabbergasted that we had it ready to go for six-fifty, seven-hundred thousand, and that's gonna cost us a million, it's just, it's frustrating. The kids have got to have the track, we've watered this thing to death for two years, been out for bid four times, uh, frustrating, government is not the most efficient machine.
I, I've, I've got a bid here from Recor Tan back in March of twenty-three, so we've been doing this for a year and a half.
One was Recor Tan, it was a little bit.
Uh, I just was looking at the dates here.
Had Recor Tan and Geo Services.
Yeah, they, I mean, they, they all submitted about the same time, I'm, I was just referencing that for time, that's all.
We're back to the time thing now, just-
Yeah, y'all, I'm, I'm game, whatever, guys, these kids really, and we had the track team come in and make presentations, these, it's phenomenal what our track programs at Franklin High School produce, the quality of those children, they're serious, I've been over and watched them practice in the gym, it's phenomenal what, what those, and they've not had, we've not had a home track meet, some of them go all the way through high school.
And they won a state title, I believe the boys did, or the girls did.
But they didn't win it here.
Correct, well, they didn't win it through a meet here, correct?
Yeah, because we hadn't had a meet here.
Right. A state champion that did not have a home meet.
Yeah, and whether it's six-hundred-and-fifty here or a million, I mean, we sit up here and we spend millions of dollars on stuff sometimes, if I question at all, but these children deserve a regulation track, and that's the end game of this thing, is there's gonna be regulation, be, be sponsored, certified by every athletic association in North Carolina to be a regulation track, now that this stuff, well, it's too short, it's not long enough, it's too wide, the corners are too steep, that's what we're gonna be looking for, if we get that down the road later, even though I'm not gonna be on this board, I'll be pitching a fee, because these children deserve a track, and I wish we could have had them on this year, but uh, you know, they deserve a track. There's about sixty or seventy kids in the track program in there.
Oh, there's at least that.
Yeah.
And then middle school track, that's really their highest participation. At the middle school, they've got, I think around a hundred kids at the middle school, so you take the middle school and you take the high school.
Every time we delay, it goes up, I mean, you know, I, I'm with you, John, a hundred percent, but it could be, I don't know when the high school track will be built, but these kids, they're set for over a million dollars, that's a lot of money, that's a lot of money, uh, but.
Put it in a motion.
No, I'm not the school liaison.
This time I make a motion, we enter into a contract agreement with Williams?
Geo Services.
Geo Services for the Macon Middle School track, or we authorize Macon school system to enter into a contract.
The lead is on us, second.
And approve a budget amendment, do you want to just round it to one-hundred-and-eighty-thousand even?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, from general fund balance.
A motion been made?
Without the specs, we're gonna just, here it is, we're gonna approve it.
I feel like, to be honest with you, um, what's happened right now is, we've hired an architectural firm to design a track, the school system has, I feel like fundamentally, it's kinda out of our hands. We charge the school system to come up with the designs, they come to us with the manila envelope and say, here is what we're asking for, it's our job to either fund it or not fund it, so I feel like I agree with everything you said a minute ago, and you, you heard me quiz Mrs. Kite over there about the asphalt thickness, but at the end of the day, two weeks is two weeks, it's summertime, the kids only have so much time out of school, they'll be paving that track when they come back, and then, you know, we're back in the square one, so if we're gonna do it, let's just do it.
And I think Danny Williamson will not lay his surface, athletic surface on a poor base, he's not gonna let that down.
Oh, I agree, I agree one-hundred percent, but where the confusion came in is he said we need four inches of asphalt in order to put that surface on there, and now we're presenting two inches. I have, I'm, I'm not doubting the fact, but at the same time, let's do it right, if we're gonna do it, and whatever it takes to do that, and so if he's gonna warrant it for five years, then I guess that's uh-
Did your, is the school board happy with this?
I think it's four.
They're satisfied?
Off to Danny, I think it's four inches, Danny.
Okay, we'll see, that, that's, that's a little better, um, um, and the drainage's gonna be corrected, and all of the, the high ground and stuff around the track, all that's gonna be graded away and, and-
It, it won't have water on it.
And then the uh-
On the asphalt part.
And you gotta hit one of ours off of it.
Yes, sir, absolutely, absolutely.
Yeah.
Because the way it rolls, if the girls know the infill, they'll, they'll destroy it.
You got me, you gotta have ADA parking right there, and you know, they use that for the Special Olympics right now, too, and that ADA parking would actually-
Actually, we're in Highlands this year because of the horse track surfaces.
Yeah.
But yes, we've used it in the past for Special Olympics.
And the senior games and stuff use all that, all those facilities out there.
If you're gonna have it, you might as well just do it right.
All right, we've got a motion, second, cussing, discussing, all in agreement, continue with it.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Rock and roll.
Thank you very much.
Let's see, where we at now?
They feel something with these days.
LS3, Miss Kite?
Uh.
Ten D? Burger King's hollernous, come on.
Um, I'm not entirely sure what sort of update y'all are looking for, I know we've got um, a request for um, continuation of our agreement for the next phase of our design fees that we need to um, approve for the summer's portion of work. We're nearing the end of the construction documents phase of the high school project, um, we've been working in the last couple of months with Carol Daniel, who was this construction manager at Risk that y'all have selected um, to build the high school project. Um, we are in the, wrapping up the document stage for, to turn those documents over to Carol Daniel for bidding the summer of the construction portion of the work, and so our procurement phase is a, the next phase of our design services agreement, um, with an amount of fees that is associated with that, that has yet to be authorized by this board. Um, we've been working sort of phase at a time incrementally with our fees for design services, and so that was an exhibit that I updated and sent to Lori and Derek about a week ago, um, for that ongoing uh, support through the procurement phase, which is led by Carol Daniel, um, to bid to subcontractors. And I'm happy to answer whatever questions y'all have about the status of the project and where we're at, um, with things and some of the work that we've been doing the last couple of months. Um, we've been meeting with the liaison committee, and a large portion of the discussion has been led by Carol Daniel, because we're in that process of estimating the scope of the project and developing budget information, um, which I think we'll be in a position to per, present to y'all at the May twenty-eighth meeting, um, with Carol Daniel leading that effort, um, and presenting the updated costs of construction that they've estimated in anticipation and preparation for the bidding that will happen, um, that is a formal bidding process with their um, subcontractors, that they, that um, they are in the process of developing a list of subcontractors and outreach to local folks and more regional folks that are capable of doing a project of this size.
So we'll be discussing again on the twenty-eighth?
We'll be discussing it again on the twenty-eighth, um, and y'all can sort of guide us if you want a more formal presentation regarding the design work that's been ongoing, but we're sort of at the end of that stage, and there's been very little um, sort of design changes. We've been meeting with and refining some of the educational spaces with folks like Colleen and her teachers and CTE, uh, to make sure that we have everything coordinated, but um, the design has largely stayed the same at this point, because we're just really in a documentation phase, so that Carol Daniel has um, drawings to work off of to build it eventually.
With, uh, this summer, or when we meet on the twenty-eighth, will that kinda give us a um, idea of what's gonna happen this summer, when you get all the kids away from there and-
Yeah, we'll talk about some of the um, the logistics that we'll be working towards through the summer, um, and into the early fall, um, before they start with a more formal construction process, um, that is, I think they're estimating in terms of the scheduling work that they've been doing, um, a start of mid-October, um, for the bulk of the site work that needs to start for the project. But there's a decent amount of preparation that we'll be working with them and have been meeting with the school folks to talk about, how do we drop kids off and, from cars, and how, where do the buses go when we're during construction, and how do we keep the construction areas, um, the student areas safe from the construction activities and those kinds of things? So that's all been stuff that we've been working, um, with, uh, with the school folks, um, to develop those logistics plans, um, and there'll be a little bit of preparation work that will happen in anticipation of that before construction starts.
Be careful driving home.
Okay. That's all I got.
Emily? I do have a question.
Yes.
After our call last week where we had Carol Daniel on the phone, you were talking about procurement, I'm just wondering, so we started this off with design, bid, build, which makes sense to have procurement in your contract.
Mm-hmm.
But now that Carol Daniel is gonna be actually doing the formal bidding, what role does LS3P plays that costs two-hundred-and-thirty-eight-thousand-eighty-one dollars?
Our services largely stay the same, because we still facilitate the communication of our information through procurement, so there are subcontractors, there will still be a pre-bid meeting for all of those subcontractors that we will help facilitate, there will be questions that get asked as, as subcontractors dig through our documents, they will need clarifications, we will issue revisions and addendums based on ongoing feedback that we get from Carol Daniel, and so there's a continuation of the work that we're doing, and it would largely be the same as when um, we would be hard-bidding this a similar way that we did with the track project. The only difference is, is that Carol Daniel just opens the bidding and they put their GMP together with the bidding that they get and the, and the cost information that they get from their subcontractors. Though our work is always really the same. We're still communicating and reaching out to those contractors to clarify the information and to make sure they have everything that they need to bid it properly.
But Carol Daniel will actually be putting the ads in the paper, soliciting bids, be here on bid opening day, etc.
Yeah, and we would still be on bid, we would still attend the bid opening. We would still attend the pre-bid meeting because we would answer a lot of those questions that would come up during that process. And so that would all still be the same.
I was just curious because of course, this is a new process for all of us. We've never done it this way.
Right.
It just, like I said, hit me after our call, like why are we, we feel like we're paying double for procurement, so.
Right, but our, our services still essentially stay the same.
Good question, Lori. Thank you.
So if you want to move forward with the procurement phase, we would need a budget amendment for $238,081 from general fund balance to authorize the next step of LS3P's contract for Franklin High School. We don't ask them for much tonight, are we?
How, how much is that again?
Can we push that one back to the 28th meeting?
I'm fine with that. I don't know.
All right, let's just do that. Bring the school board in on that one.
Okay. Is that a, do you have to vote on that or you just make that a request?
Make a motion at this time. We postpone funding for LS3P till the 28th joint session.
Second.
Matt's not gonna stall or anything, right, Emily?
No, I mean, our, our procurement services will start at the beginning of June. That will be when we issue drawings to Carol Daniel for them to start bidding to subcontractors. So we would enter that phase at the beginning of June.
Not really opposing. I'm just trying to bring in some good conversation with the school board. So really, I think it's just healthy.
Any further discussion? Not all in agreement, as you hand? Let's see. David Kulp, everybody, thanks for staying. The next one's mine. We, I'm gonna make mine real brief. Goes back to what you were talking about, David. The, we've done a, we've been exploring, looking at amended resolution. Calling a special advisor referendum for the levy of a one-quarter cent county sales and use tax. The difference, what we, last month, we did one. We're doing amended one now. I'll just read it to you. Whereas May County adopted a resolution calling for the special advisory referendum for the levy of a quarter cent county sales and use tax at the March 12th, 24th, May County Board of Commissioners meeting. And now desires to amend this resolution to allow for the funding to be used to better address ongoing operational needs in the Macon County school system. And that's where things can get there and get mixed and, and help some kids in that arena, that lower age arena. Anyway, that's, that'd be the Deidre now thing. But anyway, I go on to say, this is, the May County Board of Commissioners hereby stated its intent to use the revenues from the Article 46, one-quarter cent county sales and use tax. If approved by the voters, approved by the voters, this puts it in the voters' hands of this quarter cent sales tax. Not, not us up here, not, not y'all, but the quarter cent sales tax. If approved by the voters of May County to fund operating expenses in the Macon County school system. And Deidre, anything you want to say about that, y'all, you and Mr. Lynch talked today or? And also, we had a, we, we have a business advisor council, a council that's made up of business people. And they support this, too. We will be starting a, with Mr. Ann Fox's help, I'm gonna draft him, a marketing piece for this quarter cent sales tax. We're gonna do everything to make it work this time. The last time, it didn't make it. And, but we're gonna work hard this time to market it in such a manner that the public will understand their role in securing or bringing more needs or wanted needs to the Macon County schools. And Deidre now will be, work with that.
Do you want to comment on that? We're very limited in what we can do, though, Gary.
Okay, keep talking. You're limited.
My understanding that the, of course, we've known that the local board cannot market this.
Right, yeah, yeah, you're right.
That, that has to be done by an outsider organization. Now, the local board can distribute information, but it cannot, it cannot lobby one way or another for it or spend taxpayer money to do it.
Right.
Right, cannot advocate one way or another.
You can do the resolution, but that's in the board.
Yeah, but the business advisory council.
Whomever.
Have, are willing to take on the marketing piece of this, which allows us to abide with the rules and stuff like that. This board's here where we're not advocating or whatever it is. But the business advisor council, when we met last month, we're going to, when school's out, we're gonna design a marketing procedure, how to take it to the community, sell it in the right way, and, but it'd be under the business advisory council. Which also, by law, they assist the Macon County Board of Education in their, whatever it is, things to go forward with or need. They, their part of their role is to assist the Macon County Board of Education by law. And, and we've got a group that works with them. And we'll jump on this. Probably, you gotta watch it. You'll either get in too late or you get in too early. And to find that time, what I've worked with some of the business advisor county people, they will, they're, they're working on making sure we don't do it too early, don't do it too late. And we'll keep having meetings on that. And I'd like to think that we'll look at this in a marketing sense somewhere through the, uh, August, did you got, you only got September and October to do the push. And so what you were talking about earlier there, David, this is gonna be a, a piece that they're gonna be looking at real hard and getting assistance down and getting help down in the lower grades and stuff like that to do the preventive part. And it's like you were talking about, or actually, the horse is out of the barn. It's hard to, hard to herd it back up. So we're gonna try to do more at the, at the grade levels to assist the homes, whatever it may be, to get these young people with their minds on something else besides things that's detrimental to them. That's why I want you to stay. I just didn't want you to walk out of here because it'll depend on your hip, too, as we move along to support this quarter cent sales tax for the voters. And, and I'm, I'm on the John Cheryl, say what he always says. Tell us about that vote, about that tax. It's the best.
Sales tax is the fairest tax there is, if there is such a thing, but.
But in this situation, it's a, it's the fairest thing for, for the voters to do in there. We're, we're not doing it. We're definitely gonna advocate it. And we feel like it's something to, to move on.
We put it on the referendum and that's, that's our role.
And let the voters decide whether they want to pay.
They're smart enough.
Yeah, and, and we got to be smart enough to the business advisor council to make sure we're doing the right things. Getting it, marketing it out to the community. Now, we're doing, go ahead.
My only question is, Mr. Shores, I thought we were adding the term operational to the word capital that was already in there.
No, no, it's out. I see. Capital's not in there. Is that what you're saying?
The last one was only capital. And I thought we were adding the word operational.
Probably should just be capital, that's what.
I mean, I feel like that's what.
Operating can be anything. That can be.
Well, operational expenses allows us to kind of have a broader.
Yeah, use it wherever you want to.
Yeah, yeah.
Or S replacing S or funds or whatever.
Let me, let me just loom to that a little bit. We had the word capital in there when we first started. But make the, some of the people in the business arena, when we received the $62 million, we, we want to make sure that we're presenting something that the $62 million is not a deterrent to voting for the quarter cent sales tax. And that was the rhyme reason behind that is to, to leave the word capital out of it because it's a, it could, it could turn out to be a negative as far as people voting. They say, well, we've got enough money out there now. You got $62 million. Well, that's, we don't want that to interfere in what we're trying to do, give it the quarter cent sales tax and get some help in the lower grades and things like that. That was the rationale behind the leaving the capital out. Where we going from here? It's an amended resolution. Just, you have it in your packet. We've had an opportunity for the last two or three days to talk to each other face to face. We've done more discussing, discussing, so we're okay.
Can I ask our legal counsel, can I add the word capital to that? Yes, ma'am. Just, I wrote down earlier, the Highlands project, yeah, we got handed $62 million. The Highlands project's gonna come in somewhere around 10 million. Mr. Higdon, the Nana Hala school, 300,000 to 500,000 with the sewer treatment plan in, the purchase of the land, middle school track. They're wanting to turf that track as well. Highlands has got a geological survey with the turf up there. We have East Franklin. We have 125 to 40 million dollar high schools coming down the pipe. $62 million goes a long way, but there's $200 million in capital needs as well. And I feel like, to me, I'll make that motion as long as I can have capital and.
Where, where does it, where you got capital in?
Then it'll, it just need to be added on the third whereas. It will say, the third whereas, it will say, allow for the funding to be used to better address ongoing operational and capital needs in the Macon County school system. And then you will make your second change under number one, under the now, therefore it be resolved. You will make it, you will change it in the last sentence to say, if approved by the voters of Macon County, to fund operating expenses and capital expenses in the Macon County school system. And those are the two places that that would need to be changed. Can we table that till our next meeting?
If it's an A then R, though, if it's an A then R, you know what's gonna go.
Well, specifically, can I, can I put and? Okay. This time, I'd like to make a motion. Do we add the word and capital needs to the amended resolution for the quarter cent sales tax referendum?
Is that on, uh, let me do, the third, let's see, one, two, three, the third whereas?
Yes, sir.
Uh, then on, uh, now, the number one, the last sentence, and that.
Operational and capital.
Operational, and.
And that's it.
Now, now we've put a pressure on you and Tammy, putting.
All we gotta do is change one word.
One or?
Two.
Two, in two places with one word.
We'll each copy.
Tammy will have that. She can get that done before lunch tomorrow.
I thought you were gonna say before she goes home tonight. All right. If it's, I'll put it out here so we can regroup with it.
Motion on the floor.
Motion on the floor.
Second.
Second. Any further, you need that, you need that verified again, clarified?
We've had enough discussion.
It's on the referendum. It doesn't matter. Let's go for a vote.
All in favor? All right, another five. That's good.
I don't have the two hours to listen to that. I'm gonna save it now.
Let's see. I've got your best.
Well, we go another hour, Gary.
I know, but I'll turn it over to Josh. He'll be back over in just a minute.
Five-minute recess.
Just three or four-minute recess.
Oh, okay. We've only got six items to go.
All right, let's roll. We got three.
Good evening, commissioners. I'm here tonight because a refund request was received from attorney Russell Bowling for his clients off of Lady Bug Lane. In 2021, his clients recorded a recombination deed to, they purchased two properties and then a portion of a third. And they combined everything into one parcel. Well, that combination was done, but one of those parcels actually stayed active. So they were taxed for 2.31 acres when it was already in a combination. So they were taxed for two point three one acres when it was already in a combination. So we need to, my recommendation is to release this, the taxes for twenty-two and twenty-three. And that has been, that parcel has been inactivated correctly. But the total for one, for twenty-two is one thirty-five seventy-three. And the total for two thousand twenty-three is one oh eight forty. And for a total of two forty-four thirteen.
Excuse me, motion to approve request.
Thank you.
Any more discussion, you both?
Thank you.
Good.
Thanks, Sarah.
Thank you.
Let's see, Kathy, Ms. McGah. Update on the environmental health program.
Where's John's at?
He may be in the restroom, you want a hold a second? I gotta go find the corn, man.
Well, we got one, but it's a different one.
Hey, like, give us a drive.
Come on, brother.
God, it's cold in here. Take my long johns off for June next year.
Alright, we got eleven D, eleven D, eleven D, eleven D. Eleven D. We get to a three.
Good evening. How are you?
Doing fine.
Oh, good. So I'm, I'm here to give you an update from our discussion last month about environmental health. We've implemented a few things that have, has helped us see an improvement in our backlog, which is when your main concern was last month. So right now, we, we have implemented overtime for the, our. I've got, brought a couple of our environmental health specialists here this evening. They've been working really, really hard. Over the last month and a half, they've done over two hundred different types of permits or applications. So he, they have really put in the extra time, working hard. Right now, as of today, we have six applications in our box. So we are right at one week. You know, just over that possibly with those six, but that's, I can't, I couldn't ask for any better news than that. We have had some help from another county. It's only been a couple of days, but they do produce, they're very highly experienced individuals. So they produce a, a number of permits when they're here. So that has helped. So a lot of good news for us. And I think that you'll see, you'll start hearing a lot of, a lot of positive comments about how they've gotten caught up. Now, the thing to keep in mind is they can't sustain this level and this pace forever. Because they have been working, so it's a very physical job. And they've been working a lot of overtime hours. So I think what you'll, you'll see in Derek's proposal is, includes the proposal you asked for about the staffing and the capacity of what we need in order to maintain this low level of backlog indefinitely. So when he presents the budget, it's, it's included in that.
Really, I just wanted to say thanks for coming by, you know, I feel like when there's a problem, you kind of want to, to me, you bring it to the forefront. And I think that's kind of what we do, we kind of highlighted that, it sounds like it's worked itself out.
Yeah, we, I do want to also tell you that both myself and Lisa Browning have been over to Jackson County a couple of times and have been taking some suggestions and making a little, a little bit of changes. There's some more things that we can implement. It's going to take a little bit of time for us to get some of the electronic files and stuff when we need to do it. But definitely was worthwhile to spend some time over there and, and see what they're doing. So we took, took everything that you said and went away with it and really had a, a good positive attitude about it and moved forward and tried to take them, you know, suggestions for improvements that we could implement here.
I'd say I definitely appreciate you guys doing that because really, that's really all we were trying to convey in the last meeting.
Yeah.
Now, when you say it's not sustainable, like, what do you mean by that?
Well, their level, you know, they're, they're, right now, it's three or four people that are working overtime nonstop. And so.
Was that just to get it kind of caught up?
Yeah, that's.
Is it going to require that to just keep it going?
It's going to require that to keep that going and, and to be, to be at this level. I mean, to be at this little of a backlog. So what we're suggesting, we've got two people in training right now. One's in food and lodging and one's in onsite. So there's a proposal in the budget to try to look at, and, and truly, we looked at what Jackson County has as their organization and their setup and, and looked at how we could implement that here. So that's what the proposal is included in the budget. And, and to be honest, I, I looked at, just really compatible as far as the number of applications we're seeing and the type of applications when I went over there, you know, reviewed numbers with their supervisor and stuff. We're, we're just right neck and neck with the numbers that are, we're seeing. So it makes sense that the staffing would be the same.
So the two that you have in training, what you get them trained?
Well, one's in food and lodging and one will help with onsite.
The only two recommended positions in the budget, by the way.
And I appreciate what you guys, Jeremy, Chaz, I don't even know Jake.
He's not here.
Appreciate what you're doing because I've always been advocate that. And I appreciate and I hope that administration of the Health Department is understanding the value of having a quick turnaround, what that does to the overall economy in, in Macon County. This waiting six, eight, twelve weeks is, is just, it's infuriated me for twenty years now. So I appreciate that, but I understand and know full well, I know all the guy, I mean, I'm in this business, been in it thirty-seven years. Contract labor is not going to, that's not a permanent solution. Overtime is not a permanent solution, but we're going to have to have some help, but when I've, I don't stick my nose in your business or anybody else's business, but I know what's going on in western North Carolina, on Southwest Florida. I'm very disheartened and very disappointed and very, my heart's just, that we've lost the most qualified employee we had in environmental health. Reasons, doesn't matter, it's just that we had a very high level. And we worked hard to get this down to this point and now we're just kind of took a step back. And I'm personally disappointed that, that happened. The second thing, we've been talking about scanning our documents forever, for a year. Where are we at on that?
The most recent is that with, our IT department is looking at how the company that we finally found that could split those documents could maintain the metadata when they send it back. And so Amanda in IT has been working with us to, to. And again, this, this IT conversation goes over my head, I'm not an expert in IT. But there's, they're working out some challenges between exchanging the information.
And the, the solution to that is going to be included in the fiscal year twenty-five budget. It's been a, it's been a process, as you mentioned, we started out and, and we thought, you know, right out of the gate, we could do it, scan all of them in. But then it found out certain information that scanned in, that's on a permit cannot be made public. And so therefore, we had to go back and now it's going through thousands and thousands of documents and seeing how information can be redacted, which information can't be redacted, who stores the information, who keeps the information. So we kind of went in, in a, on a wild goose chase with this thing, but we did land on, on a firm that we're working with. There's some software in, in the recommended budget that will enable us to, to move forward with this. And again, it's going to be a huge help, hopefully it'll help the, the folks up front and everything because, you know, building inspections haven't slowed down any. I mean, building inspections data through, through last month is, is thirteen percent higher than it was this time last year. So, you know, it's like, it's, you know, you're seeing the falling off in, in, in real estate sales, but the, the building industry and environmental health, they're, they're chugging over there. So I appreciate everything you're doing.
We also have a, a meeting scheduled to look at the software that's going to, that he's talking about in the budget that another county has already implemented. And so we've got a meeting where a few, a couple of our staff and a couple of building inspectors, they're going to go look and see how it works.
That's another thing this will do, is it'll marry up and make it a smoother process between environmental health and building inspections, coordinating everything with the permits and, and everything. Hopefully it'll just be a, a whole new experience for the industry.
And we're actively pursuing that.
Yes, yeah, we've got quite, we've been in, they've had, we've had numerous, we've had about five webinars on it. Joe can speak to it.
Yeah, I was going to say something real quick, and to your point, Paul, on what, about the scanning in the documents. There's new software and we are sending some of our staff down in the next couple of weeks to Catawba County, just to view it from start to finish. But when you enter in your parcel data, like, really, enter in your parcel data. Come up with a list of permits that's been pulled on that parcel. Now, we may not have the septic drawing, but it's going to say, yes, there's a septic approval there somewhere. It's going to key that, really say, yes, we got septic approval. It's going to key staff to say, hey, I know what we're looking for that at in Laserfish. So it, it will speed up the process and all these researches, hopefully. It will all be bombarded, research is on, do we have septic approval, do we have well approval?
We spent a lot of time looking at the different programs that are out there and I think we've, we've hit one that we really both look like it's going to work for both of us.
How long will it take to get this on line?
Don't quote me on this, you guys didn't really meet. They'd like to, they'd like to start that implementation process if it's approved quickly. There's a lot of work behind the scenes, let's go first, and they would like to implement it at the first of the year. It's a very busy time, because there's going to be some hiccups.
You mean it would be accessible at the first of the year?
Or in phases.
They like to go live at the first of the year.
Well, there's going to be, there's going to be snafus in it for a while, but as long as we've got a, kind of a target date for the realtors and the public that access these records. That's a very, that's ambitious, I think.
And that was, that was a little piece off our company that we are working with. They want to do it at a slow time of year, January is normally permitted. And you guys know their construction, that's a slow time of the year. They want to go slow time here, that way you can work out some of the kinks.
Glad you're involved in it, Joe, thank you, sir.
Thank you, Joe.
And the fees, you and I have argued the fees forever.
Yeah.
I'm going to make a recommendation to the county manager. I've got support of the board. Since you're so impressed with Jackson County's environmental health program, I think our, our fee structure should mimic theirs. It's a structured, well-thought-out approach to charging for our services, do you have a problem with that? If we make that recommendation, it's going to be a little hit on revenue.
And if that's something you're willing to, to absorb and, you know, I.
We've already prepared the upcoming budget based on current fees. That's kind of hard when we're presenting a week.
Well, we could always dissolve one of them positions.
Yeah. Back to square one.
I've got a meeting with, I've, I've got a set of meetings with Derek on that and, and we've gotten them now until the end of June. But it's been a pet peeve of mine ever since I was a health supervisor, or health environmental supervisor, twenty-eight years ago. Is we just pull numbers out of the air and I hate that, everything needs to be structured and, and, and supportive with a little science. So a hundred and twenty dollars a bedroom, end of the game.
Going, going back to that, and I, I, you know, I said that, but you know, the, the board, as Kathy had mentioned, the board requested that at the, at the, the March meeting for us to consider that in the budget with those positions. But in all seriousness, is it something that, as we get on into the fiscal year, could do that? Could do that after the budget passage and, and if it would be, you know, you could always wait and see the revenue hit and you could have some money built into that operating budget in those positions to be able to absorb however much you needed to, there'd be some cushion there. I don't know if it's going to be a fifteen thousand dollar hit, if it's going to be a forty thousand, a hundred thousand.
I mean, and it's based on the economy and how it, you know, you just don't know, so.
We've got forty-five million, or forty million sitting in the bank, so I'm not sure if we're going to start.
But you know, with that.
Much longer.
And that's not for returning operations though, that's for capital.
Alright, I'll be going for that one, for that crash.
Oh, now, I see.
Yeah.
It's coming.
We'll talk about it in the future.
Next board, the FTS board meeting is?
Uh, the end of May, last, the fourth Tuesday of May.
Thank you, Kathy, thank you, guys.
Anything else, I'll be happy to bring.
No, Kathy, I just want to think.
Thank you guys for busting your honey into.
It wasn't what I had to say in that meeting last month, was not a direct attack on anyone. It was when you have a problem like that, we are here to try to solve these and help you solve the problem. We hear from the general public what's going on, so it's our job.
You know, we want to get the work done and want to make you proud, you know, we're not, we're want, so we listened. You know, we went away looking at what we could do to improve things and we, we hope that you'll see, you know, you recognize how, that we took it seriously and they've worked very hard.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Kathy, thanks for coming.
Thank you, Kathy.
Thank you.
David, are you, remember someone on eleven C?
No, we just think it'll prove us to.
Just need a motion to approve the fireworks display.
We're doing one.
Salute, Ms. David, you're secretary to the board.
But are we doing C and D?
No, just C.
Okay.
Individual.
Yep, all in favor?
C. Motion through Nana Hala, eleven D. Nana Hala fireworks.
Vote.
Yep.
Alright, brother.
This a good one?
Brother, brother. Eleven E.
Been waiting on evening, evening for this moment. First off, I just want to say thanks for coming, thanks for showing up in person and it says a lot. Like a lot of you guys, believe it or not, I actually love water and I love our environment, I love our community. You can look at some of the property I own and you can see that, most of the property I try to buy has water on it. And I love water. As long as Nana Hala and First Way can keep paying me money, I'm going to try to buy farmland. And so to Mrs. Johnson's point, I don't want to get personal, but I feel like I kind of need to defend myself. About ten years ago or better, I had several tracts of land that would essentially balance. If I took earth from this piece of land, I proposed putting on this piece of land, the piece in the, on the Georgia road. Well, we've hauled twelve hundred loads of dirt out of that piece of property, that dirt's gone. I actually sought legal counsel to go ahead and deed restrict that property that I purchased, just to show good faith. That, that's happening, that property will never be filled. So that discussion's over with, so there's no need to worry about that, no need to worry about me profiting from this rolsonning up here. So that, that bug's squashed. Moving forward, I think everybody has different walks of life. You know, I'm not picking on anybody, but some people hug trees. I'm in the profession where we cut trees, I mean, that's my law, we, we clear land, we cut trees, everybody has different walks of life. So different people make different approaches to different professions. And me sitting on this board, I've had numerous discussions throughout the public. I've had a lot of feedback, a lot of people, no, they didn't show up to that meeting, there was a lot of like emotions, I mean, there's no other way to say that, I know I offended some other people when I said that, but really, look, emotions were high. So what I wanted to do was propose some of the issues that were brought to me, to this board, okay? We brought it to the board, this board said, hey, let's send it down here to the planning board, and that's what's supposed to happen. Planning board had it, two, three months, we barely could even get attendance to even have a quorum and have any discussion. I coached nine and ten-year-old youth baseball and I had a game and I'm head coach and I was not going to miss that game. But go figure, the meeting I missed. But go figure, the meeting I missed happened to be the humdinger. All right, I mean, it really was. So, at the end of the day, I don't know how else to say this. I feel like there's three issues at stake here that I wanted to bring up to this board for discussion. I understand the planning board kinda kicked them back, and these aren't, these aren't things that I pulled out of the air. These are real issues that people in the public, people in the community, have come to me about over the years. Um, one of them for this board is, um, the erosion control. Okay? I've wanted to bring up following the state recommended guideline, moving our ordinance from half an acre to one acre, again, following North Carolina state statute. Secondly, I wanted to talk about, um, potential RV parks in, in a watershed. There's a one-strike clause in the watershed ordinance. I really don't wanna go through all these, but that would essentially allow for some of our property to be used into an RV park. Look at, this board wants to talk about economics and being competitive in Rayburn County and other adjacent counties. Look at the Tuckassee G. Look at all the homes along the river. Look, it, it hurts feelings along the way. It, it happens, but a lot of you guys live in the floodplain. You know, at the end of the day, we have to coexist, and I think what needs to happen is we need to find common ground. I'm not saying that we just need to open up. I would be devastated if the whole Georgia road was turned into an industrial sector and people just took the mountain and put it in the creek. That's not at all what I'm proposing. My point is, it's pretty well cut and dry in this book right here, and it's caused heartache in this community. It was brought to my attention, and my role in this seat right here is to bring it up for discussion. And so, I brought it for discussion here. I sent it to the planning board, and, uh, you know what? That's where we're at right now. I'm not sitting here with a gavel saying, you people, you know, I just, I, I wanted to have discussion about it. I wanna bring it up. Uh, surely, the Lord, we can find some kinda common ground. Surely, we can find something. I've been very transparent in my beliefs in government, and, uh, I don't think it's gonna be a surprise to anybody whenever I say that, that, uh, really, I'm not a fan of the government. Don't trust the government. I don't like the government. I don't think the government spends its tax dollars wisely, and, uh, it's a fundamental belief that I just, I feel that way. So, this whole erosion control thing, I think's kinda been blown up a little bit out of proportion, but I just wanted to bring it to this board for discussion, see if anybody wanted to chime in. And, uh, really, if it gets tabled, it gets tabled. If we wanna bring it next month to a public hearing, we can bring it next month to a public hearing. At this point in time, really, I wouldn't mind opening for discussion, and I'm, I'm neutral.
Well, Commissioner Young, I've been approached by several people, um, as well, and, um, and I agree. I think that, uh, these county ordinances here should go to state standards, um, and the town of Franklin, you're allowed to fill in. And, I mean, it, one of the farmers wanted to build a road a long ways away from the river, couldn't do it. He wanted, only reason he wanted to build a parking spot, so he could get his equipment out of the road. So, when he harvested or worked on this, this farmland, he could get out of the roadway. So, I think, um, you know, I, I question, why is it okay to do it in the town of Franklin? And it's not okay to do it out in the county. You know, I look at some of this farmland. You got questioned about some property that you bought. Well, I question about, um, the property that is now going into con, uh, con, conserv, conservation that's coming off of the tax rolls and everything else, because the people that own it can't use it. Well, then, your conservation organizations end up with that property for pennies on the dollar, because the people has no use for it. So, you got beat up about buying a piece of property. Well, these conservation agencies are doing the same thing. And so, in my mind, I owned a campground. I was told, um, that in seven years, I was gonna have to move every campsite off, uh, out of that campground. Well, what did I do? I didn't wanna fight the county over it. I sent it to my attorney. My attorney said, well, yeah, your grandfather did. They can't do anything to you, but I didn't wanna go into that fight. But campgrounds are designed, when I go camping, I wanna be on the river. I wanna be on the creek. Well, if you can't have one, where do we go? So, I, I don't propose that we allow fill in a floodway, but to make property usable for a landowner to put in a culvert. As, uh, Mr. Culpepper said, these people put in a culvert to get into their property, and they were, um, gonna be fined all this big money and stuff. I, I, I think the Constitution is very clear that when you own land, you use that land for your best interest for your ownership. And I heard some comments about the, um, oh, we don't wanna cause problems to your neighbor. Well, the state law says that when you own property, that it's your responsibility to take that water from your property to get it off of your property. Now, is that neighborly? Well, I, I don't know. That's just the state law. So, you have a right to remove that water from your place. So, I, I, I'm all on board for, um, taking these ordinances and, um, and bringing them back to state standards.
When you say state standards, is that state law?
State, well...
Okay, state law, okay.
I mean, we already talked about the rec park. If that had been in the county, we probably wouldn't even be having a conversation of making the rec park a new park, because the restrictions are gone, the county restrictions are so bad that you couldn't do what we're hoping to do out there. We're under the town ordinance.
I believe the planning board has moved it into a model where that you bring in another group, you bring in some people together and talk about, where do we go from here? Is that what I read in my email?
They tabled it.
They tabled it, then requesting a group to come in and, or, and have some additional discussion.
But I think that, um, I think the best way to do this is to set a public hearing for, um, and let, I mean, we've heard one side, now we need to say who's gonna come in here from the other side. We've heard why we shouldn't do it. Now, we need to hear why these people are on our backs, that we should do it.
I think for the sake of fairness, I think, you know, a public hearing would be good. I mean, for any issue, no matter where you stand on it, it's good to hear both sides of it. Doesn't mean that you're for either or, but it is fair, you know, because you have citizens throughout the whole county. So, and I don't know how you guys feel about it. You know, I've heard, I've read through the emails that I was sent about this, and to be honest with you, I did, I was not fully educated and understanding of, like, what this was all about. So, I started going through the emails, and I talked to Commissioner Young, you know, about it, kinda hearing a little bit about both sides. I personally, I'd like to hear some more, you know, about it, just in all fairness.
I'd like to know the law. It's what, it's, um, I just don't, if you, if you, if there's a law there that addresses this, until it gets, Jesus Christ.
Yep, there you go, sir.
No wonder we burn up a forest. Yes, sir, brother. You wanna read this to me?
No, I don't read this. But, so, these model ordinances that the state has, flood, erosion control, watershed, all of them, they got a model ordinance. Built into those model ordinances are optional ways that you can make that ordinance more restrictive. You don't have to do those things. The, the soil erosion control, just for example, right there, where we say currently a half acre requires a plan, the model ordinance is gonna say, you have to say a minimum of one acre. So, there's, there's, and all these ordinances are like this. So, we've, you know, over the years, for whatever reason, you know, we've got a little bit more restrictive on certain thing, and maybe the word for word, what the model ordinance says on something else. But there are some options built in those model ordinances to make them more restrictive, and they're okay with that. They're also okay with you, like the town of Franklin, I think everybody's gone up there for David. Their flood ordinance is just the base, simplest, most least restrictive, the least thing that they can do, um, flood ordinance. And that's up to you, you guys. Anybody's talked to me about this. I can make an argument either way on most of these ordinances, and anybody can. And if you, if you can make an argument either way, what that means is, there's not a right answer for me. So, whatever you guys decide to do, we'll do. We'll, if we wanna change them all, we'll change them all. Gonna have to get legal counsel involved, though.
Well, you're just required to meet the state minimum requirements. You can be more restrictive, like Joe said, and, but you just can't be less restrictive in those state minimum requirements.
So, before you set a public hearing, though, we've got a, we've got a marked-up copy. You guys have a marked-up copy of the flood ordinance there. Before you set a public hearing, I will look at that flood ordinance and make sure that that's what you want to go to public hearing.
Well, and Joe, I don't mind to take Mr. Pennlin's recommendation, put together a subcommittee. Like, I feel like I'm, I'm not trying to cram this down anybody's throat. I just feel like, you know, everybody has a different angle on everything, and I think, we have obviously heard this side. So, I'm not saying, you know what I mean, this is something we have to shove down everybody's throat right away, but I feel like we've, we've had months of discussion on this, and, and, uh, we're back, it's back on this board's hands, so we either let it go or move on, you know?
But you, I, I, I mean, saying that, I said, I think you guys need to make sure, and I, you, you may be sure that this is an ordinance that you want to present at public hearing. Cause, I mean, what we, we went through there, and we took out everywhere it says you can't put fill in the floodplain. That's not the minimum ordinance. So, just make sure that that's, you know, I mean, we've, we've had discussions about the, uh, free board. We got a two-foot free board. You don't have to have two-foot free board. I mean, there's, so just make sure that you're not, we're not just doing part of it if you want all of it done. You don't have to be on the public hearing. Just make sure this is right form of the ordinance.
Well, is that something like Mr. Pennlin suggested there, that that group, that he suggested come back together, that make the decision on whether you wanna have a, uh...
The problem is, I'll be honest, you put ten, twelve, fifteen people on the planning board, and you're there for three hours and nothing, you can't, you can't make a decision with that many people. And I'm not being mean. If you had twelve commissioners up here, you'd never get done with discussion. That's what happens. It's hard. It's hard.
Mr. Pennlin, what's your view of this?
A subcommittee, I agree with Josh, needs to be a small number of people. The more you give, the harder it is to get something done, and that subcommittee would be a few members of the planning board, not the entire planning board. But the planning board can continue working on other things while they're working on this and vetting through the process.
So, I would, I would make a suggestion here. Choose a couple of plant board members, a couple of boards of commissioners. Create your subcommittee. Bring people like Lewis in, bring people from the other side in. Mr. Culpepper, Wayne Moss, some of the people that are gonna speak from the other side in. Get that, get an idea of what you want this ordinance to look like.
No, I think that's fair. I mean, really, like I said, I just, this is an issue that's been brought up to me. What do you do when people come to you, you know, more than one time with issues?
Well, I told, I told, I'm gonna say something I told Josh Young I wasn't gonna say.
Speak your heart, brother.
I won't say it, because I think, I think it's fair. We don't need to say, no, you cannot fill in the floodplain. I don't believe that. But I also don't believe we need to say, you need to fill anywhere you want to fill in the floodplain. Y'all, I don't play, I don't need to believe, I don't think we need to be on the extreme with anything. We need to be somewhere in the middle on this thing as a county. I think that's the best for people who want to develop. That's the best for people who want to protect the environment. Hey, show us, show us, yeah, show us that you're not gonna hurt anybody else. We'll let you do it.
What would be the best way to get there?
Well, I think you start with a committee like that. You shape that ordinance. Uh, there's, there's some counties out there that have, that are, that allow fill in the floodplain now, that do what's called a no adverse impact study. Get somebody to run a study. You ain't hurting nobody else. Do it. In, in my opinion, that's the best option for everybody. Uh, that way, if you need to fill and you're not hurting anybody, go for it.
Lewis, can you hear what's being said up here?
Yeah, uh, I agree with Joe. I mean, there's things in there that I have questions about, and working professionally with engineers that they come up with. One example is, you couldn't fill in the floodplain, which you could fill in the floodway. That's extremely confusing to me. So, I, I think we need to vet it out in the committees. There needs to be some system in, where each property that you deal with, you're going on an individual case. And the state ordinance, I have a problem with it, because it comes out of Raleigh, number one. And what works in Raleigh does not work in North Carolina. You have two totally different demographics there. Your topography's different. I've worked down here. Your floodplains go for miles. We don't have that. Highlands is another example. They're at four thousand feet. We're at two thousand feet. Their rivers are more in size, their floodplains are different than ours. I think we need to seek out similar situations with other counties that settle with us and find a meeting ground in there. I, I agree with Joe a hundred percent. We don't need to go from one extreme to another. You've got to find some middle ground here at worst.
Can I ask an added question? Just curiosity on this. Uh, regarding, like, the insurance commission and FEMA, does any of this impact how they would view the order? I'm just thinking outside the box of what, what if something happened, are we shooting ourselves in the foot? I know twenty years ago, somebody talked about earlier when we had landslide, uh, I just, I remember, I was no fan of FEMA, because every week was a different person, and I completely didn't see it. But I just remember them begging us to quit building houses in floodplain. And so, I just, I'm just curious, as part of this discussion, is that a factor that, you know, hey, we can do this, but now everybody on four forty-one corridor or some insurance goes up twenty percent, or FEMA's not gonna cover your law? I, again, because I don't know. I'm just curious.
I think I can answer that question. So, whatever change we decide to make, any, if any change to any of these ordinances, they have to be reviewed. A floodplain ordinance not only has to be reviewed by the state floodplain mapping people, it's gonna also have to be reviewed by FEMA. If they say, give us a check mark, say, yes, okay, that meets the intent of the model ordinance, we're good. If they say no, and we adopt it anyway, we're out of flood insurance rate program anyway, and insurance rates are gonna go up. So, um, that's, that's the way it's gonna work. And if you guys that don't know, just give you a quick, I know a lot of you guys do. You've been around for a while, but maybe Danny, you may not know, and, and the rest of you guys probably not know. All right, so a flood, flood ordinance, I just told Josh, is, of all the ordinances we have in Macon County, it's the one that we can least do without, because federal disaster relief, flooding insurance rates are determined whether we have that ordinance or not. If you want federal disaster relief, gotta have it. You want a, a rate that you can afford on your flooding insurance, and if you got a mortgage in the floodplain, you're gonna have to have flooding insurance. You gotta have flood, you gotta have flood ordinance and flood program. Now, we can maneuver around in that flood ordinance, make it more restrictive and less restrictive, and still be under the guidelines of FEMA, and that's up to you guys to decide what you feel is best for the county, but...
When you get that, you gonna put that committee together in your spare time?
Uh, no, I, I, I would say you guys choose two, you guys choose two commissioners. I'll choose two plant board members.
If we get into discussion, and people are gonna think I'm crazy, they did it in Dillsborough. But when you alter, and I think Bill was talking about the floodplain being a natural design. It is a natural design, and when you impede that in any manner, you build a dam. You've affected that natural flow, that natural design. And they build a dam, it's been the narrow valleys. You don't build them in the wide expansive floodplain. So, there's bottleneck at Lake Emery. And Lake Emery was built under the premise in nineteen fifty-five, or whenever, it was beautiful lakeside resort and all that. In discussions in this subcommittee, and I'll be long gone by then, they play with my babies and goats, but, uh, what is the value, the pros and cons of Lake Emery Dam? I know it's still a generating plant, but what would that do to restore a free-flowing stream all the way through Macon County? Yeah, just throwing it up there. Don't wanna respond, don't wanna, but is, is...
Common, common sense would tell me, Paul, but it's got to change it.
That's what?
It's got to change the floodplain. We remove that dam, and I think every one of our flood maps has probably had to be updated, because...
Above the dam?
Yeah, above the dam.
Now, down where my father lives, it's not going to affect it all, because that dam...
Yeah, below the...
Generally, dams, big dams on Larkasaw River, et cetera, designed for flood control.
Right.
Lake Emery has... Lake Emery has zero impact on flood control. It's full of silt and sediment. Uh, it has zero, you, you, you get a million gallons of water coming down, you get a million gallons going over the dam. I mean, it's, it's, it's just a bottleneck.
I agree.
You've got all that backed up, and it would affect some of the fish. And I know McCarney's a small-mouthed bass man, but, uh, a, a free-flowing stream through Macon County, to me, is, is a win-win. But that, that, if we're going to think about overall, long-term design of flood ordinances or restrictions, let's start at the ground or to creek up and look at it. But throwing that in as one of the topics for discussion, somebody, Bill's a aquatic biologist. He knows a lot more about that than I do. What is the values, pros and cons of Lake Emery Dam? Boy, that's a, that closed her down there.
Well, I, I mean, I, I mean, I, I think, I mean, you, you know, anybody that knows anything about hydraulics is going to, would agree, Paul, that you remove that dam, everything above that dam, all that floodplain is going to completely change.
And you've got a good case study in Savannah, in Jackson County right now.
Yeah, I mean, even up, up Coliseum River, what we have, that's going to change that. Removing that dam is going to change that because we know what happens there at the soccer fields where the Coliseum River runs in Little Tennessee River. That backs it up right there. I mean, it's, it would definitely...
Just throw that out there. Give you all something to do in your spare time.
I have read that when you remove the dams, you have to figure out what you're going to do with all that silt. And all that silt's got, all that glue is locked in. Where are you going to put it?
They did it in Ja, in Jackson County. They hauled it off, built it neatly, balled it all. Sold that stuff for twenty-five dollars a ton.
Okay, because some of it probably has toxins in it that I wouldn't put in my field. Now, that's up to whoever takes the dirt away, but...
That's where we need the science involved in it.
Yes, and actually, yeah, that would be really good. Your subcommittee, get some scientists in there. Pro and con, everyone's decision. I'm cool with it. But definitely get somebody that knows what they're doing.
Well, we're...
Can I speak to the board just a second? Uh, I know Paul doesn't want to prolong this discussion, and I'm technically...
No, I've already missed Oprah Bill. I'm very upset.
You have really opened a can of worms there, and it's a can of worms that had to get opened sometime. I have been living, dreading the day that I would have to have strong opinions about taking out Lake Emery Dam. Uh, it's going to happen someday, some way. So it is appropriate to be thinking about it now. Do I have the answers? Can I tell you what's good and everything is good and bad about it? I cannot.
I may either.
And that's, that's leading to the real Moore study, which nobody wants to talk about that. We're leaving, and we should be holding off the face after that.
And Duke would have to be brought in. I mean, the, the, but, but it's losing its generating capacity because of the, the silt factor. And all this silt, the reason Fontana Dam, and I asked one time a very renowned scientist, the effects of sediment in streams and hydroelectric, hydroelectric generation is a minute part of our energy source. So it's, uh, reservoirs are sand traps, and that's what Fontana Lake is. But food for, long-term, broad expansive discussion on flood control in Macon County, that needs to be a, a discussion point.
I, I, I don't want to be seen as advocating, let's postpone all the discussion about the floodplain because of that issue. But I am agreeing that it's a tremendously important issue. It's going to happen basically this county someday.
Well, I'm under the impression it's a hot potato and nobody wants it. I don't even think Duke comes in anymore. Am I wrong in that?
We looked it up the other day. It's, uh, it's, it's...
I mean, it's a disaster, and like you said, it won't, it won't generate, I bet it won't generate ten houses.
Food for thought. Next.
Thank you, Paul.
That's it.
Are we ready to go on to the fireworks or the...
The fireworks.
You done done that.
Done the fireworks.
And Chris Stahl's turn.
Go get the dog's truck.
Chris Stahl.
I need Paul to talk us about that.
Well, that's what, we're, we're going to, any action about the...
About the design of the group?
The flood, the subcommittee?
I think Josh has, Josh has to be, I don't, I know nothing about, I'm just being...
Is there an engine needed?
The suggestion was to commissioners and to planning board members.
Right off. I got my plant board chairman here. I've got one plant board member here, right? I got two plant board members. Two, wow. He's getting ready to be a commissioner.
Yeah, let's see how he works in a correction.
I think you need to put Marty on there.
Well, we can, but we've got, we've got an engineer. We've got Larry Lackey. He's a plant board member. And I think Larry would be an obvious one choice for that subcommittee. Lewis? Yep.
Can y'all make a recommendation to Mr. Rowland and let Mr. Rowland?
I'll make my recommendations. I don't, I don't...
Joe, I mean, let's just be honest. We're all adults in this room. I think it needs to be fair. You know what I mean? I feel like right now, I don't want to pick, we, we obviously have a side over here. And a side over here, I think you need to build a lane. It's laid down the middle. Like this board talked about, let's get pros and cons on both sides.
Yep.
I don't think it'd be fair to stack it with, with Mainspring and a couple of people.
No.
Not picking on anybody, just being transparent and just put advocates for both sides in the same room. And, hey, it's like putting two fire antlers together. Just let them shake them up and...
Well, McCarney is an aquatic biologist. Bill McCarney is an aquatic biologist. He's got a little knowledge about the streams and stream flows, stream habitat. Uh, they good one. Uh, Wayne Moss, a farmer, owns more land than Macon County, most anybody.
Do we want, so what I, I would, and, and that's fine if we want to have all those members on. But what I would envision, what Josh is saying, is you, you get your committee set, and then you bring people like McCartney and Wayne Moss in to speak to their concerns. Louis Penland, speak to their concerns about what that is. And then let them come back and report, hey, this is what we've found out because we've talked to everybody.
And have whoever owns Lake Emery Dam coming.
Yeah. Yep.
So would you select the two commissioners?
If you want to do something, let's throw away the half-acre restriction, go to a one-acre on the erosion control.
Go ahead and set a public hearing for those two. Those two seem like they're not hot items.
You need a public form on one item?
Public hearing on those two.
Yeah, I think those are probably significant enough changes that probably have to have public hearing. They probably be reviewed by the state.
Well, maybe y'all review the whole thing then, but that's always been a stick for me, a half acre. I mean, you can.
Let's go ahead and set a public hearing for those two, and then take this one to the...
But I think you probably want to have your committee meet first regarding your changes and then...
Well, there's three different issues here. We have floodplain, erosion control, and watershed. There's two of them here that, like Paul said, one's going from a half acre to an acre following state statute. It's not a big deal. The other one is scratching RV parks out of an ordinance. And again, that has to go to the state. So those two, to me, I don't see... Everybody that spoke today was talking about the floodplain. So I think let's go ahead and have a public hearing on those two items, and then have a subcommittee for this.
Okay.
For the floodplain. What do we think about that? You agree with that? At least we get something accomplished.
Yeah.
We set the public hearing condition on getting report back from the state that we're okay to adopt those changes at the public hearing.
Yes, you need state approval for those.
Okay, so we send them off. Send them off and go ahead and set the public hearing date, and if we don't get them back, we just push the public hearing.
Perfect.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah.
Rowland, did you get that?
Pardon?
I just checked, make sure we got...
I know somebody that did.
He's an alpha male over there.
All right, make a motion. Did you make a motion, Josh? Did you, Josh?
Make, do we need to have a public hearing independent? I guess they both be two different motions.
Yeah, public hearings.
This time, I'd like to make a motion, we have a public hearing for the sediment control ordinance, follow state model, moving from half an acre to an acre.
Will that be in June? Because you got your budgets.
Whenever, whenever Joe can get a public hearing set.
Uh, that, I, if, I'd say, yeah, I would say set it for June, and if we happen to not get, get back something from the state, then we'll just push it to July.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you for December.
Paul, on that other group member, he's, he's, uh... Did we decide when we're going to try to do that, or is that, I'd just like to get this budget stuff out of the way and...
That's up to you guys. I mean...
Let's just set a July meeting.
July ninth.
July ninth. That'd give us too much.
July ninth?
Well, we need a, we need a vote here.
Yeah.
Okay, was it still July ninth?
Sure.
Okay. Any further discussion? Let's see, you made it into a motion. Any further discussion? I'll invoke, eh, July ninth. Okay.
This time, I'd like to make a motion, we scratch RV park from the watershed ordinance, um, pending state approval in the same July ninth public hearing date.
Second.
Mr. Penland, did you hear that?
No, I didn't.
I, I, I wasn't using cock in there. I didn't think.
Yeah, I can't hear very well.
Good. Can you verbalize that a little, one more time, or?
Let me just actually read our ordinance. It's the right one. Here we go.
Mr. Penland, you can come up on the front seat up here a little bit more. Come on up.
At this time, I'd like to make a motion to follow the state model ordinance, removing recreational vehicle parks shall not be eligible for SNIA in the watershed ordinance of Macon County. July ninth, public hearing.
Second.
You hear that?
Yeah, I heard that.
Okay. I've been motion second. All in agreement? Okay. All right, rock and roll. July ninth. Now, how's that set up? Who sets it up? Joe, you set that up or ask us?
There's, there has to be a notice of the hearing, and it's two weeks beforehand, so you've got time.
Okay.
Yeah, attorney, we will get you a copy of the ordinances to send off, or do you want me to send them off? Okay. I can send them off to review. I'll get that done tomorrow, hopefully.
Okay. Thank you, Joe.
Okay. We're going to vote on the forming of the subcommittee. We don't, we don't have to name names tonight, but we are going to say, we're going to form a subcommittee to do that.
To give a consensus.
I think the, I think the chairman ought to appoint Josh and Paul to this. Come on, chairman.
Yeah, they going to be here, boys.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
All right, Chris Stahl. Thank you, Joe.
We got to get a little blood out of you, Paul, before you leave.
You're getting it. Carrying this thing around, I don't like it.
I'm optimistic this will be the shortest thing you've done all day.
Please.
Uh, at the March meeting, uh, the board approved the process for selecting, uh, consultants for development of Phase Three Cell Two of the landfill. Uh, in April, the date's in your package, uh, we sent out a, a request for qualifications. Uh, we received back one statement of qualifications. Uh, the evaluation of that is in your budget package. Uh, the respondent is qualified and meets the criteria set forth in the RFQ. And so I am here to request the board approve, uh, the, the board approve my recommendation, uh, of the single respondent and authorize county manager to enter into contract negotiations to secure the services uh, as laid out in the scope of the RFQ.
That McGill?
Yeah. They're the ones that responded, McGill and Bailey.
Nobody going to nudge in on their turf. Motion approved. There's only an anti liaison. Do we have one?
We don't have one.
Got a, got a second out of Josh.
Did you get them nerves and signs put up out there?
Did.
Thank you. I had them in by.
Come see us.
Hold on, Grant.
Too expensive.
He's asking for yays, so everybody pay attention. I was very fast.
We, we had the second. I had, I had a motion second. No, let's vote.
No, let's vote. Why are you waiting?
Thank you, Joe.
I don't know, Mr. Stahl was staying that short.
We'll make sure we all make the last.
Oh.
See what?
Somebody made sure that years ago. I don't think ever.
It already did the, already did the twelve? Is that done? I'm cool.
You talk to Paul.
The, uh, anything on the consent agenda that we need to rehash and...
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to know what this public records disposal for Macon County solid waste is.
Mr. Stahl.
For two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen.
Mr. Stahl, question.
As described in your packet, those are invoices for items that have been purchased and paid already during those years through accounts payable.
Okay.
It's your records disposal at the landfill. He was asking questions about it.
I didn't, I didn't know what it was. But she did. She...
And that's for two thousand seventeen and two thousand eighteen. And it says that they're required to retain these for three years. Well, why aren't we disposing of nineteen and twenty?
She, she disposes of them as she has space when they're doing the baler.
A lot of public records we keep longer than retention if we've got spaces.
Yes.
It's kind of a practice.
Just clean it up. Yeah.
Anything else on the consent agenda? Thank you, Chris. Um, number thirteen, uh...
Well, no, we got a motion and...
Motion second voter.
Wait a minute. I have to make a motion that we approve the consent agenda.
Okay.
We moved the motion second to the agenda. All favor, consent agenda is gone.
Who did the second?
Josh.
Josh.
Now, Mr. Anderson.
Write me down.
All right. All right, let's do this. For the Macon County library, uh, appointments here for the seat. Mr. Trask rotated off last month. Uh, I believe Mr. Higdon and a couple of, maybe another commissioner needed some more time to go through their applications. Um, what was in question is about finding somebody who was in Nantahala to represent Nantahala. So my recommendation is for Ms. Kay Rowland, who is from Nantahala, pretty solid. Um, so I make a motion that we appoint her for the seat that Trask vacated.
Now, do we need to vote, Danny, or do we go?
Yes.
Yeah, we do. I made a, because we had three applicants in the packet, and so I made a ballot, um, for those twenty applicants. Yeah, just so we've got a record of that. So everyone can just put their name on it. It's got to be a public record, and then just mark one. It's only for one position. And then we see what we have back. I'll read them out loud, um, who voted what.
Secret ballots.
Not secret.
Yeah, but I didn't want to say who you voted for.
So there was no, no, I didn't have to make a motion?
No.
No, we'll count them, and then I'll read them, and if we have, uh, three people voting for the same person, that'll be the person. If we have two and two, we'll have to vote again. It's this whole thing.
Okay, you have four.
I have four.
Come on, Higdon.
He didn't do it right.
You did a hard work. He's too busy eating down there.
Okay, great. So for, we have Commissioner Higdon. We have a vote for Kay Rowland. Commissioner Josh Young, we have a vote for Kay Rowland. Commissioner Sherrill, we have Kay Rowland. Um...
Shields.
Com, uh, Chairman Shields, we have, uh, we have a vote for Kay Rowland. And for Commissioner Antoine, we have a vote for Kay Rowland. So that's five votes, a majority.
Yeah, that was a close one. Last time, remember last time? Yeah, it was a homey, though.
Let's see, uh, we're making a motion, uh, we're not having a closed session, right? Mr. Rowland, no closed session or anything? The German?
Motion is here, Mr. Chairman.
We need a motion to continue.
Oh, yeah.
Motion to continue, Mr. Chairman.
Heather, I hear.
What was it, twenty-first? May the twenty-first?
Yeah, motion to continue to May twenty-first, six P.M., five West Main.
And please, uh, tell Eric that our thoughts are with him.
I will. I saw him today, and he just was released from the hospital tonight, so.
We appreciate you filling in.
Very good. All right, I second that.
Motion to continue. To May twenty-first, six P.M.
May twenty-first, six P.M.
Five West Main.
Five West Main.
Franklin, North Carolina.
Franklin, North Carolina.
Broke, going out the door. Break your hand, Paul.